It is now six thirty-six. I'm calling to order the Trophy Club Mud One Board of Directors Special Meeting. All Directors are here. First item, call to order, announce a quorum. We have that. Citizens comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board on any matter, whether or not it's posted on the agenda. The Board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the Board at this time concerning that item not listed on the agenda. The Board will hear presentations on a specific agenda item prior to the Board addressing those items. You may speak up to three minutes or the time limit determined by the present or presiding officer. Are there any citizen comments?
No.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to regular session. Consider and take appropriate action regarding fiscal year 2019 draft budget. Staff?
Mr. President, thank you. So today, I want to keep it fairly informal. I know this is the first budget review for three-fifths of our Board of Directors. And I want to hopefully avoid going through the sort of line-by-line grilling that we did last year for three hours. The staff feels like we've put up a fairly conservative budget in terms of next year's budget. The total increase year over year is less than one percent with the budget as proposed. We would like to talk mostly after we answer, you know, I guess, we want to go through any high-level items or concerns you have on the budget. So that's the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Wastewater Fund, the Board of Directors Fund. We've answered a lot of questions about the Fire Fund, but we do want to talk about that again tonight relative to the rollback tax rate and our need to set tax rates in the August meeting. So that's one of our high-priority items to talk about. But for the initial run-through of the O and M budget for the water and sewer groups, you know, we hope to, you know, answer any questions you might have, but keep that discussion to a shorter period of time than, you know, a couple hours. If there's any other questions you have that you don't want to ask in a public setting, staff is more than happy to answer them. You know, we understand that it can be a little confusing at times. But again, we feel like we've put forward a fairly conservative budget. So after we go through just kind of a high-level overview of the O and M budget, which includes both capital and debt reserves, when I say that, I'm talking about all of them. So in the individual departments, you see O and M costs, you see capital costs. So that'd be pay-go capital there where we pull it out and just buy something in a given year. And our definition of capital is anything that's over $5,000. And then there's a debt service piece as well. We want to look at all of those. But try to, like I said, keep that to a fairly limited timeframe. So we want to focus as much as we can on the fire budget and the rollback tax rate. We think we have a strategy for avoiding the possibility of a rollback petition. So let Stephen talk about that. I do want to talk about this upcoming bond issue. It's planned to be a revenue bond issue. We're working through that application process with TCEQ. And it really relates to the former resolution of the Board that provided for us to apply for a TC, effectively a Texas Water Development Board Revenue Bond. Cover two items. One is the interconnecting pipeline, and the other is the cost overruns at the wastewater treatment plant. My hope is to have a discussion about the relative benefits of doing that over 30 years versus 20 from a philosophical perspective. I believe that both of those assets have lifespans of 30 years or more, and that the people benefiting from the depreciation on that asset should be paying for it. And it also reduces the total annual debt service costs. So I want to talk about that. Want to talk about the capital budget for next year. And Stephen, I don't know if you printed out our kind of draft five-year budget. I think we gave it to the Board previously.
Yeah, I've got one printed. I've got one printed here, but I thought you emailed one out before the last meeting. If not, I can add it.
I thought so too, but we, it was just kind of a draft framework. We really didn't have much in there other than the first and second year, and then try to stretch out some of those costs over five years. But, you know, we want to talk about asset management, some of those asset inventory steps that are necessary to really get a long-term infrastructure replacement plan in place. So that was the purpose of that. And then, of course, we want to talk about the revenue ratemaking process, which is, you know, what the staff is likely to recommend there. Now, we don't have to take any steps on the revenue side of ratemaking in August. When do we have to have that, Stephen, in September? Is that it? And then it's implemented in January? Am I thinking about that right?
So we have our taxes in August here, and then our rates actually going to be in September.
So we set the rates in September, but they become effective?
The new, yeah, the new tax year.
Okay. So they become effective start of the tax year then?
Medium, right.
Okay. All right. So I'd forgotten.
Effective the tax year or first of October?
Our fiscal year, correct, our fiscal year.
Fiscal year. They become effective fiscal year, first of October.
So we do, we do want to talk about, you know, the kind of output. I know our Board President asked me the question. It was a fair question. Carmen, I think last year, we approved rates before we approved the budget. And the bu, technically, that did happen, and it happens every year. But the staff is really pushing a draft budget into the ratemaking process. So it's, it's a chicken or an egg question, but, you know, we try to say, what's the cost of running the system next year? If we need additional revenue for whichever purpose, then how do we go about getting that revenue and allocating it amongst the various users of the system? And then separately, we want to just have a talk about the certification of tax rates at the August meeting. So with that, I don't know how you'd like to proceed, Mr. President. We can kind of start with the first page of the budget and just step through it if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, that would make the most sense.
Well, the first page is going to be a collaboration of all the worksheets together. So it's really just a snapshot of the overall budget. Trying to get mine up here quickly, Stephen. Do, um, does anyone have any questions on those boxes on the front page? It's intended to be kind of a summary of the different funds. And, you know, there's some information about taxes there. I think, Stephen, are we still showing the tax rate on the front page as being over the rollback tax rate?
That is correct. It's probably going to be a little easier to understand that box if we move on to the other page, which actually has all the taxes broken out and understand what the revenue is coming off of those taxes. Like I said, this is really just an overall summary of everything that's in your packet. I would recommend diving more into the other tax page that I have, which is actually, if you want to start on the tax side, just to kind of get an overall view of the budget.
Yeah, I think we ought to go through the expense budget first. It's the next few pages, and then we can, we can circle back to that.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions they want to jump right out and ask as we go through?
Well, I have some yellow, but nothing like last year.
Good.
Let me assure you. And I'd say right up front, I really appreciate having the actuals and the budget and the proposed displayed here this way. The only thing that I might do differently would be, right now, we have a percentage of budget. If the staff would estimate what those are, you know, at the end of fiscal year, I know it's a wag, but that, that can help. But I don't think I found anything where it's critical.
So, Bill, just so I understand what you're saying, if you look at the percent of budget, that's what was, has been spent so far?
Up to the end of June.
Right?
Up to the end of June, yes.
Right. And you're saying, could there be a swag for where we think it's going to end up at the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah. Projected end of fiscal year. Okay. But having said that, I-
Right. So if you look at things like, one of the areas that that would be the most difficult in would be, let's say, water revenues, right? So on the revenue budget side, we get most of our revenue in that, effectively, that last three-month period of the year. So it is something of a swag. You can't really say if it's going to rain or what happened.
Exactly. I mean, that's, that's one which would probably be the most variable. The others are, I would say, probably less. But anyway.
Through, through the year-to-date total, that would be 75% where we're at at the end of June, or is that, I forget. What percentage of the year is-
We've got, we've got three more months. That's, that's the end of, technically, our third quarter. We have three more months going.
So that's nine months.
So if you look at it on a flat base, yeah, that's what we're looking at.
Seventy-five percent.
Yeah. There are some expenses that we do, you know, for instance, uniforms and stuff that are purchased at the end of the fiscal year. So something could have a 5%, 10% used of the budget. But we plan on spending 90 to 100% of that towards the end of fiscal year, so.
Whereas you would expect, for example, sewer, since we're going off winter quarter averaging, and we didn't change any rates, to be pretty close.
Exactly.
In fact, it shows up that way.
Yeah. The delta in sewer comes in from the commercial side. One thing I see on this page is camera fan plus equipment for what goes into proceeds from sales, sort of planning on selling the old camera van and, okay?
That's right. I understand that was a 2000 or 2002 asset. Is that right, Mike?
It's 16 years old, so, yeah. 2001, 2002.
So when we talk about the debt service budget, you'll see that we've got a new camera van. The technology's really improved in that arena. And, you know, we've, we've seen that in a couple of instances and had a great example of, you know, samples come in. The truck itself is available off of, you know, cooperative purchasing agreements. And we had, we do anticipate buying this in the same fashion we bought the new Vector truck, to be on a lease purchase agreement, just to stretch the cost of it out over a few years.
And that purchase is covered later on in the document.
Yes.
Are you on page two, Bill?
I'm on, yeah. Page two comes up too. Let's see if it is two. Yeah, I think it's two.
One of the ways I would recommend, if it's okay with you, is everyone asks their questions on page two.
Yeah.
So then we don't go all the way through it and then have to make five passes through it.
Yeah.
So let me know when your page, done with page two.
Okay. The, the other one that I found, as I was looking, and I don't, it isn't drastically variable on, on water, but one of the other ones on medical insurance, there's a large delta between this year and next year. I mean, we all, I mean, we have the medical insurance increase, but when we get to another page, I'll, I'll point it out. This one's only 6,000 difference. Engineering down on, on down the line there in the middle is, this year was 275,000, and we haven't spent any of it. So that's, I mean, 20,000 seems to be, you know, I don't know how you, how you come up with that number, but it looks to be, as I look back from the preceding years, it's a wildly variable number. So if there's-
So the engineering is an interesting deal. So with some of the engineering, a lot of the engineering gets used up and then gets moved over to capital. So as, as we actually, so when we do anything with engineering, so they're going to go and do the planning and the engineering of it. And then once it actually becomes an item that we're going to put in the capital books and actually do the project, it moves over to capital. So 20,000 is what they're looking at. And Mike, can I tell you more about what he was planning on the 20,000 for? But we wind up not needing the 275, I believe that was the budget before, 275.
Yeah, I think the 275, that was mostly for like the interconnect pipeline. So it shows up as engineering, but it'll actually be capitalized with the project.
Okay.
So we've spent, you know, we've paid a lot of money in engineering so far this year.
Yep.
So that'll actually be capitalized. I put $20,000 in there just because I know we've got some water improvements to do next year. While we still got some engineering to pay with the joint projects with the town. So I just wanted to make sure we had enough money in there to cover that expense.
Well, like I say, I, I don't have, you don't have a basis or a feel for any of the numbers. So that's, that's the reason for my question on it.
Yeah, so I know we've spent a lot of money in engineering out of pocket just for this first section and everything.
Mm-hmm.
You know, once we capitalize that with revenue bond and everything, all of that'll go into one chunk, be capitalized, and start depreciating.
So will this, would this show a transfer, the 275, to someplace else in the main budget?
Correct. So I'm still working right now, which is the new fund that we have open for the water line there. I'm going to have to pull over everything from this fiscal year. We've been kind of waiting on getting the bond in. Obviously, the application's going to be in. We won't get the money until sometime next fiscal year.
Yeah.
So there will be some, quite a bit of transfers and basically holding due-to-do-fronds from the mud to that fund.
Okay. On down the page there-
I can go ahead and talk about the medical, if you want to go over the medical, if you had a question on that.
I think it was on a different page. It wasn't on this page.
The large delta's on a different page. I was just-
It's going to be, it's going to be all together. So all the medical is done by formula for everything in here. The biggest thing you're going to have there is, we budget 15% up. I've heard anywhere from 20, from, from 10 to 20%. It's still a swag number because we're all the way out until December, basically, for our medical.
Yeah.
But the big thing has to do with if there's an open position. I have to budget for someone being in the highest plan, the family plan, instead of an individual plan. And an individual plan makes a big difference when you go from individual to family. So any of that has an open position in any department, I'm budgeting for the highest expense.
Okay.
With the 15% increase on top of that.
That would be prudent. Electricity. I know we executed a new electricity plan, and this shows a decrease. And I just wanted to make sure that you all were really comfortable with, with that number. I know it shows we use 54% as opposed to 75%. But here again, when we use, you know, last three months, most water sales, that's our most pumping too, so.
You'll see when we get to page three, there's even bigger reduction on the wastewater side.
I did.
And that's really a reflection of not knowing where we were on the wastewater plant as our experience comes back in. We're obviously not going to send them more money than they deserve, so we budgeted for the kind of worst-case scenario there.
Yeah.
And, and we're happy to report that we're under budget. So hopefully, once all the new systems are up and running, we have a little bit of experience, we'll be better at forecasting how much electricity we use.
Okay. Well, and the new rates help as well as the new systems.
Yeah, that's the thing. I took the, so I'm taking actual numbers last year because, especially the wastewater treatment plant, we did a lot of guessing and trying to say, okay, if everything's running 100% with both systems running, what are we looking at? What's the worst-case scenario? We actually have now a good amount of data in front of us, and we did go in and get the new rates with the contract. So we have a little bit cheaper rates now than we did. So there's a few different parameters, but this is very confident with the number here. I'm taking actual data, actually kilowatts for the last 12 months.
Okay.
And taking all that and putting that in effect now.
Sounds good.
Think about the water side. If I'm using more electricity, that means I'm pumping more water.
That's exactly right. [laughing]
I have a quick question. Apologize. On the reference there, you have GF dash K, but there's not a GF dash K.
So there is more, there is quite a bit more worksheets in this, in this packet here, and they go into more details. Kind of similar, if you get in here and you see how the water revenue is, there's a bunch of data, like the electricity, there's a bunch of data in there. So these notes are actually of those worksheets. I'll be more happy to provide you the actual backup for each one of those. But those are actually how, because each one of those have a G, have a C schedule. They're all formulas in a worksheet that I've been working on, trying to get the, get the data from. They're not just plug numbers. They're actually done by calculations. So without having additional 15 pages of just calculations, these are the base numbers here, and I'll be glad to provide any of those with, even when we print them out for you or show it to you.
And, you know, we have been working to give you a limited set of all those worksheets so that, you know, we're not giving you more detail than you really need to be effective policymakers. I think that's my, my goal, is to kind of narrow it down. When we look at, you know, the town, for example, we have a budget column for last year, for the current year, and that's it. I mean, they're for the proposed year. It's very simple, and we don't, you know, we don't have five years of stuff in here. So there's a lot of effort that goes into that.
I understand that. The charter requires that they do that.
Yeah.
So. It should be, it should be there someplace. Schools and training for water. Glad to see the number goes up. And I expect that there is a reason, an anticipated use of that for training for our employees. And that concludes my page, whatever that is.
Addressed all the questions that I had.
I do have one question. On the last revenue item, revenue bond reimbursement, obviously, there was a number in there, 260, whatever it is, for this year. What was that? I mean, if that's not in any of the-
That was a due-to-do-from, from collecting money that's coming in for a bond, that kind of similar to what we talked about with the 16th water line. We don't have a bond yet, but we knew the mud, mud's general fund is going to get reimbursed back.
So this other number that we looked at, what it was, at the two, the one Bill brought up before, that's still sitting out there?
275.
275.
275 is the engineering part, right.
Would that show up somewhere similar to this next year?
That's going to show up in the capital side of it, but once I get all the funds together, there will be a, basically, a reserve or probably a reserve that's going to come back into it, correct?
Okay.
Once I get all the due-to-do-fronds back.
That makes sense to me. Okay.
Steve, which line were you looking at there again? I'm sorry.
That's the last one, the revenue. So the last, basically, the end of the first paragraph.
I think the best way to explain that is basically what we're doing. We're coming out of pocket and funding that ourselves until that bond money comes through, and then we're reimbursing ourselves.
It shows up on this line when it becomes another fiscal year, and that's what shows up as a revenue technically. So we're reimbursing it back to our, our reserves or, or general fund.
Okay. Any, any other questions on page two? If not, we'll go forward to page three.
Wholesale water shows increased, that's a cost. And we will have a little bit larger water, water sales, I think, next year, based on...
There is that, and we almost had a round of 4% increase from Fort Worth fish coming this fiscal year.
Yeah.
In 2019. So I went to the last wholesale meeting, and they proposed that, and it looks like that's what they're moving forward with. I think it was like a 3.89.
Okay.
Or something like that.
And that's on their volume piece, right? So there's a separate peaking charge that comes along with that.
They're going to-
That's just what their pass-through cost to us was. I mean, it was all different for a lot of you, a lot of the different surrounding areas. Ours wasn't as high as most of them, I'm assuming, because we're not taking such a huge impact on their system as some of the rest.
If you will, if you want to go to page 13, that's actually one of the breakdowns that I did present to you, so you can see what the difference the cost is going to be.
I've had, I'll, I'll comment on this when we go back to page three, but I've had a, I have a comment on the general concept here, and I've explained it to the general manager. I really don't like a three-year basis for projections. I prefer a 10-year, a 10-year basis with an average.
Okay.
Because I think, we all know mother nature's fickle. But anyway, a lot of times, you will get into a three-year cycle. And so you'll have three years of drought, followed by three years of wet year. And what that's, that really sets you up in your budgeting system, I think. Because you can be budgeting for a, a dry year based on three years, and end up getting a wet year, and then being short on your revenue.
If you look at 10 years, Bill, what does the impact of Trophy Club being built out over that period of time have on that? I mean-
I do have, I forwarded to the general manager. I have built a chart that takes care of that. What it basically, what I've basically done is I've gone back and captured the volume for the year and the number of connections, averaged those, and gotten a amount, volume per connection. And I do that each year, and then I take all of that data, then I get the 10-year average of that individual who's by connection. Gives me a really good feel for what an average year looks like. And then come back and say, okay, now, I'm not really comfortable with where our reserves are at, and the worst down year that we've had was down 16% off the average. It was a wet year, but so our sales were down 16%. So that's the worst condition that we had. Generally, I don't, I don't know exactly what the average is, because I haven't averaged the amount to see what that number is for, for, for the down years, down on sales, wet years. But I looked at the number in here and compared it to my work, and come up very close. Looks like this is probably about 12% below the 10-year average per connection. So this is, this water revenue number that we're looking at here based on gallons sold is a conservative number that will handle most wet years. There was one year that was, like I said, 16%, but the 12% being down is a very, I would say, a conservative number, but I think it's a good number for us to use.
Yeah. I guess the only concern I would have with using such a, and I, I do appreciate the, making sure you cover cycle, but in general, the amount of water people use is decreasing.
Oh, yeah.
And to me, if you go with such a, if you go with 10 years, you're going to always overestimate because you're capturing the higher use. And I think when I look three, four, five months ago, we still have not gotten back to the amount of water we sold five years ago, even though our, the number of users is up 30, 30%. And so one of the concerns I would have with going back 10 years is that you will always overestimate the amount of water that you're going to sell.
Yeah, it, I mean, it goes back, the data goes back, I'm using right now, to 2008. This, this is the sheet that I use. Goes back to 2008. And we started, the Mud Institute did twice-a-week watering in 2012. And I think if you go back to, I think it's 2011, like September of 2011, pumped 170 million gallons, I think, in one month. It's the high, it is the high month. I don't think we'll ever do that again, ever. But I understand what you're saying about the overall usage going down. The volume, I've got that data here. In 20, 2013, the volume per connection, and this was a, an up year, was 200, let's see, that's 238 million gallons per the year, and it dropped down to 2016, 191. So that's per connection. That's a significant decrease. So, yeah. Just background information. But that's, I, like I say, I prefer the larger span because I don't want to get caught in one of these three-year cycle deals and get hung out to dry. But anyway, that's, I'm back to page three.
Did you have, did you get all your questions addressed? Bill?
I just, I was just talking about, we went to page three for that particular, particular item.
I think we're on page three.
Yeah. I mean, we went to page 13 for that, for that particular discussion.
I'll just bring up one point, and this will change because my build versus pump goes to actual media reading dates. But today was the 31st, so I pumped almost 149 million gallons this month.
This month. Yeah.
If you look at, on page 13, while we're on that part, so on the bottom section of that is Fort Worth costs. This is off of their, their new certified numbers they gave us. There is an increased monthly rate of use charge that's projected for a true-up. This is because right now, we're doing 39,000, if I'm not mistaken, Mike, a month as a service. We're looking at their base rate to go into 44, but we project there's going to be a true-up from the amount of gallons being pumped that we're going to have to pay for at work to make up for it. So this is, I want to kind of break it down. Last year, we kind of had this number hidden in all the numbers. I want to kind of break it down so you let you see what we're, what we're projecting here. So this is something that we can kind of manipulate and move if you guys feel more comfortable. This is more of a conservative number, just in case we get hit with a large bill from Fort Worth based on the water consumption that we're using now.
When do we get that true-up bill?
It is the last bill in, in the fiscal year.
Yeah, we usually don't, don't get it till, I think we actually pay it in October.
Yeah.
I would note, just for everybody's illustration, I guess, the Tarrant Regional Water District Has four big customers. They would be Arlington, Mansfield, Fort Worth. And TRA is a smaller, but also a big customer. So they basically pump raw water over into the series of lakes from East Texas. Uh, or down farther on the Trinity River. It's almost like a recycled loop. And their contract with Fort Worth, which is the biggest customer of Tarrant Regional Water District, again, they provide just raw water. Um, includes an estimate of how much water Fort Worth is gonna use. And that includes the electricity to pump all that water over here. So in the wet years of twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Um, their, their contract has a true-up period at the end of the year also. Um, they overestimated how much electricity Fort Worth would need to get all that water up here in the basins. In fact, I think at the end of fifteen. Uh, one of the board members for TR, um, WD, Tarrant Regional Water District, said he's never seen, he's an eighty, ninety-year-old guy. Never seen all the lakes in the system full at the same time. It's just, it doesn't happen. And that included Bridgeport filled up at the end of that year. So that was really, it was the wettest year on record. Um, and that has a big impact actually because Fort Worth is passing through those true-up costs. If they have to pump a bunch more water. Cause we're in a high-demand year. Um, they pass it on to Fort Worth, Fort Worth passes it on to us. And fortunately, we have a little more revenue to cover that, um, in a high-water use year, um, for that true-up piece. It's a daisy chain.
So Greg, I, I bill you on page three. You got questions?
I'm on, I'm on page three now.
I have two questions, if I might.
Go ahead.
Um, I think you mentioned engineering, thirty thousand dollar cost there. And what is that specifically?
That's lift station one, right? So.
All right, yeah.
Let, let me address that to start with, Mike. Um, so lift station number one is a, a big lift station that right now is different in style. Than all of our other lift stations. So I think I put up a diagram to show what the internal part of a, a lift station looks like. That one is different in the sense that it basically has two chambers. One is a dry chamber. Goes down into a pit. It's got pumps mounted and the shafts go through the wall effectively to, or the water gets sucked through the wall into. These pumps that are mounted in a dry pit. Every one of our other lift stations has submersible pumps. So we go out there with a crane, we pull them out. So. This is the one that doesn't belong, so to speak. Um, to climb into that, to that pit, it involves climbing into, uh. Confined space and has all the requirements of, you know, safety regulations for our folks that have to get in there. Um, we just, um, I think I just signed today the PO to get the ladder fixed. So. The ladder had actually rusted off the wall in this pit going down in. Uh, Mike has recommended that we take a close look and I totally support this. Um, at just maybe converting that into a submersible pump station. And doing away with that, you know, even any need to go into that pit.
And if we were to do that, that's what that line item is?
Well, thi- this thirty thousand would allow us to engineer it and see what it would cost. And we'd have to bring it back in a future year and say, well, we wanna do this as a project.
Right, okay.
Uh, speaking of that lift station, I didn't notice anything in here for access, uh, for that station.
I think we have that budgeted this year.
Is it this year? Okay, good.
So we're still moving forward with that. That's why I put the thirty thousand in here for, you know, okay, well, the first step is access. We got that budgeted this year. Next year, we can look at engineering and then hopefully by the next fiscal year, we can bring it back to the board with a price to change it over.
I, I do have some thing, other things.
Another question I had, I think you started to talk about this, Mike, or Steven, on electricity, the big difference.
Yes. So the electricity on this one here, like I said, the big difference is real data versus what we assume that the new MBRs. And how many basins we're gonna be up and running, at what time of the year. We actually tried to get with an engineer at the time and say, okay, if this system is fully running a hundred percent. With all the MBRs, all the bases running, how much electricity, how many kilowatts would it use a year? We also had the old system running, wasn't sure when the old system was gonna be turned off. So I had two systems running in, in essence. So this is actually using real data and taking our numbers and even doing a small increase as, you know, as everything goes for, for increase of electricity, so. It all has been under formula, using real data versus hypotheticals.
It's fair to say last year's budget was overly conservative.
Well, and another push there too. Right now, we're taking samples before UV and after UV. We'll probably do that. I know Carmen said, you know, we'll do that for about a year and hopefully we will try to position, uh. Petition TCEQ to hopefully maybe one day get rid of our UV bulbs, which would really make our electricity go down.
Okay. Uh, I have up, up above that area, uh, I don't know. Steve, are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
Uh, I have, um, meter expense, fifty going to seventy, currently expended, uh. Twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, what do we have planned there?
We have PD thirty coming on with a bunch of big, huge meters that are very, very expensive.
Oh, we can't get them to buy them, huh?
We would do, so this is something I've talked with Steven about. So my meter budget every year. I go out and spend fifty, sixty thousand dollars on meters. Well, somebody will come in, pay for their meter, we'll go set it. That revenue's coming back to us, but it does not go back into that line item. This is something that I've discussed with Renee and Steven. It's like, okay, well, I'm. Showing that I'm spending all this money, but we're actually recouping it.
It's up in the revenue line.
So there's an offset somewhere else.
It's an offset somewhere else, but it goes back into general fund.
Yeah, it'll go back into the general fund for the revenue there. It comes back actually as a miscellaneous, which Mike naive. I spotted this out earlier in this year and him and I have had some discussions about that. So we're gonna try to use as an offsetting back into his, so he's not being penalized for it.
Here's the, uh, medical expen- medical insurance one that caught my attention. Thirty, uh, on wastewater there. A thirty, thirty-two thousand, if I got the math right, thirty-two thousand delta.
Yes, a fifty percent increase. Cause even with the, uh, to me, it seems like that number would be lower. Because the same method of calculating would have been the same one we used last year. Um, and I don't think we're increasing the number of personnel on the wastewater side. It seemed like we're down one. Uh, and so it seems like that cost would be lower, not higher.
Well, when you say increase, we're actually two, technically two positions are vacant. So when a position is vacant, I have to go off of what would be the lower cost, which they happen to be individual costs at the time. Now they're gonna be family costs going forward. So that increase, I have to budget for, just in case we have two employees come aboard who are now taking family.
Okay, so make sure I understand it. So previously, there were two single people there.
Correct.
And so there was a lower reimbursement amount, but because those positions are now empty. We have to assume that it's going to be two with the family plan.
Correct.
And so that's artificially driving up the cost for the budget.
So the number of positions doesn't change, it's just the per position on those couple.
Correct.
Okay, I, I understand what you've told me. That stated. We didn't budget for two, two short two positions last year, I don't think.
Well, last year, technically, we had, so right now, we have, um, Jason right now is in the water side.
The best way to ever say that, he's budgeting for two people, taking families and everything. Last year, everything was filled.
Okay.
With employees, so we knew what they were going to take.
So the delta between an individual and a family for two people is thirty-two thousand dollars?
So the, just for instance here, the, for the year, you go from four hundred and fifty. Uh, that's wrong, I gotta go to medical here. So, let's see.
See where I'm at.
It's a fair question.
I, I think, it's like, I went, I could have one.
I guess the other question I would ask, Steven, is the two positions, one of them is in administration, is it not? We have the superintendent position open, or do we have two positions at the wastewater?
Technically, we have two, we have a superintendent position open and technically we have a worker position, a field operator.
That's the one that Jason is in?
Is currently doing the water side right now, technically. So we kinda, I just have to budget as if. Whichever way he goes, I have to put the family there so I can make sure there's enough in there. So just gonna give you an idea, so an employee only. Uh, for the year, comes out to eighty-one hundred dollars with the increase. Uh, for an employee with family is over eighteen. So it's ten thousand dollars per employee.
That gets you to ninety-two.
Yeah, that gets you twenty of the.
That gets you twenty of the thirty.
Plus the ten or fifteen percent increase. Okay, I got it, thanks. The, uh, okay, the other one that's on that page, I, well, I see that vehicle maintenance, uh, drop down. Uh, and that's, that's an interesting one because you take the path clear across the previous years. And you look where it's at right now, at eighty-five percent and sixty-eight hundred. How do we get to five thousand?
I put five thousand in there. They have two brand-new trucks over there and we are getting a brand-new VAC truck. So my hopeful assum- assumption is that we're not gonna be doing, you know, a lot of major vehicle maintenance other than just normal PM.
Okay.
Hopefully, there's still warranty running on the two new trucks.
Yes.
Okay.
Two new trucks, I mean, we always get like a three-year, thirty-six thousand mile.
I was actually gonna ask about that. It's like, we bought new trucks, I would, would have expected it to go down.
Yes.
Uh, dumpster services, which is something that I had mentioned a couple of times in our board meetings. Going from sixty to seventy-five. And I basically, I, I, my thought is that you've increased that five, since we're basically should be at seventy-five percent now. Three months to go and, uh. Five thousand per month, that's, yeah.
Like more like six, like six a month.
Yeah, so I mean, that's pretty close. I mean, just roughing it in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I'm the one that actually put that in there. So I think we're looking for an increase, but hopefully with. Us getting, be able to use our coverage storage for sludge and everything, hopefully we can reduce some of that cost also.
Oh.
But.
We think we can get some of, get rid of some of the weight?
Some of the weight.
Well, you've got that, that belt press, right, being put in there, right?
Yes.
When does that go in?
What's that?
The belt press.
The belt press has been running for a long time. We've had that online.
We talked about the replacement.
Oh, the replacement belt. Okay, so I have a company locally that's going to come and replace that. They have had their shop broken into. And a lot of damage done, so they are in the rebuilding phase of basically getting their vehicles back on the road. But I'm assuming it'll be done in the next week or two.
Okay. I was about to say the money we're potentially losing and exist, existing weight. It may make more sense to pay a little bit more to have it done, uh, to avoid the higher, uh, costs of.
Right now, we're putting extended drying time on our sludge. They used to take it right from underneath the auger of the belt press, right into the dumpster. Now they're taking it out on a drying bed, letting it sit out in the sun, letting it dry for about a week. Trying to reduce a lot of that. We also had a lot of water coming in from one of our grit removal systems. And we revamped, revamped that to cut down on some of the weight also.
Super. Super. Uh, electricity down fan, you know, that's, that's an impressive down number. And I would, if we, if we can hold to that, a lot of thanks goes to staff for that. Searching out that new rate structure. Uh, once, and schools and training up, so I guess we're going to be looking at some certifications. And that's all I've got on that page.
Any other questions for page three? Okay, let's proceed to page four. One of the things that, um, Carmen and I did a tour of the, uh. Wastewater Treatment Plant a week or two ago.
Was the hottest day of the year, I think.
Yes.
I'm about sweated to death.
It was rather warm, so I'd like to publicly rebuke the general manager for suggesting that day. No, I asked him to take me out on that day. Uh, so that was all my fault for dragging him out there. Um, I would like to, uh, wondering, uh. Just a question for you, Mike. Have you ever considered getting cleaner service out there? Maybe, uh, monthly for the, uh, the facilities out there, the toilet, the kitchen area. So at least once a month, there's a good deep clean. Is that something that's baked into the budget?
It is not. So Carmen has approached me about this, uh, on the water side as well on the wastewater side. Usually every Friday, we will have the employees go out there and put a nice cleaning on everything. I mean, if we have time, it includes washing trucks and everything. So I think they can put in enough effort to make it as clean as they would like it to be.
Do we get hot water out there?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess.
They have great room, they have hot water. They've actually got a shower facility. In fact, I did a walk-through this morning with, uh, Weber and, uh, Joe with CPNY. And somebody has been using the shower facilities out there, so the facilities are being used.
Yeah, I think that's one where as clean as they would like it to be, may not be as clean as it needs to be. And there's a, I think there's some health and safety concerns given, especially on the wastewater side. Given their chosen profession. And so I, I, in my mind, I think it's something we ought to reconsider. Um, I think if there's a, if someone were to get sick. Then there's an obvious negative impact to the district and obviously we need to do everything we can to support our employees. And so, and, uh, God forbid, if we have a, uh, a lady that has to work out in that area. I've been in places where guys have been in charge of, uh, hygiene and it's not all. Not always the most impressive thing, so that's one where I'd ask you to reconsider as you go forward with the budget.
Well, it, it also gets the quality of workplace. I mean, tell an employee, you know, it's Friday, it's time to go clean up the area. I, I know they do it and I know why you do it, it's just.
And I could appreciate.
Why they have a supervisor to walk through to make sure that the area is clean too.
And I can appreciate them wanting to, uh, take responsibility for cleaning that area, but I, but I also think it probably be appropriate. To have at least once a month, someone to go out there and, and really clean it to make sure that things never get beyond. A, uh, a reasonable standard.
I mean, that's definitely a direction we can go if you guys would like.
We'll, we'll certainly get an estimate and take a look at, um, amending the budget as, uh, the draft budget that we have here.
Uh, salaries. What type of cost of living increase? I don't, there's not a, uh, supplemental schedule to go with this.
Two point one right now.
I'm sorry?
Two point one.
And that's based on?
That's just based on what it was here. Last year, I've reached out to see what some of the other indies are doing. I know we went off of last year, then we went off of Dal- Dallas is, uh, what they went off of. So I just need to get the information what they're gonna go off of.
Is, rather than looking at that, is there any reason that we don't use a CPI that's based off of this particular region? It's available.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that. Why not use CPI?
You happen to know what that is?
No, I haven't looked at it.
My guess is more than two this year.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't looked at it in a year or two, uh, go out and do the research, but they, somewhere there is published a CPI for, for this area.
The, I think the last time I saw it was at two point seven, but that was a national number, not a local number.
Bureau of Labor Statistics shows for the Dallas, Fort Worth, Arlington area.
You're fast.
Um, in May, this is in May of twenty eighteen, so it's a little bit dated. Area prices rise one point six percent in April and May and up three point nine percent over the year.
There you go.
Do they ever change CPI? Probably not.
Well, we'll be happy to take a look at that and, uh.
Okay.
Use up-to-date numbers.
Okay.
Any other? Did you have anything else on page three, Bill?
Independent labor is way too much.
Any, anything else?
One and four, right?
Yeah, one and four.
Well, we're, if, if there're no, yes, a four, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Now, I'm, while I'm talking about salaries for the employees' salaries, we received, uh, you know, the information that you got from the, uh.
Right.
From the study.
Let, let me tell you what, um, my plan is.
Okay.
Um, for the August meeting, uh, my plan is to come back and have the board adopt. Uh, the ranges and classifications that were, um, specified there. Um, Steven has taken. Well, we're also gonna recommend a couple of other things. So one, uh, in my experience. Um, the, the midpoint of the range for any given job is considered, uh, fully competent. So if someone's been in that role for three to five years, they're, they're getting, passing, uh, employee reviews. Um, they're capable of doing the job, they have all the certifications necessary, they should be at the midpoint of that, of that range. Um, so the class and comp study really provided that set of ranges. Um, as we look at, um, where people are, we don't have that many people out of whack with respect to. Um as we look at um where people are, we don't have that many people out of whack with respect to that compensation strategy. So I'm gonna bring it back, set of classifications, um as well as some implementation guidelines that the staff um hopes to have the board adopt, which would include, um you know, if someone's been here seven, eight years, they're fully competent, but they're the first quartile of their range. That we um go ahead and use some of the money that, I forget what's line item it is, Stephen, but now we have a little bit of money for the general manager to say, you know what, you're out of whack, we're gonna make a one-time adjustment and get you to where you need to be. We had a name for that, right, it was on a.
It's actually embedded into, it's in the salaries, it's in the worksheet of the salaries.
So we we stuck a little extra money in there for that, but it turns out we're not that far off. So we have a few people out of whack and, you know, we gotta get an analysis together to say, well, here's all of our folks. Here's how long they've been in that position, where are they in their range?
Because this 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 proposed is down by five thousand dollars, a little more than five thousand dollars for next year.
Are you looking at admin?
Uh yeah, I am looking at admin.
Correct.
So are we talking, I mean, we have new admin folks, so I would guess that would be part of a factor going into it.
Correct.
Okay.
The other question would be, does this include replacing Michelle in this number?
It does.
It does include.
It it does, yes. It does include the the salary for that position, but I I think as we discussed, Greg, the um the recommendation's gonna come back a little different than that.
Yeah, and and essentially, I just want to make sure that was something included for that head count.
There is.
It has to do, I mean, there I know it looks weird on paper that, you know, we went the next year and kept the same level staff, but yet the the salaries are going down. It has to do with the shift in positions, uh with what the prior positions were paying versus what the new staff is going and where they are on there. Uh so this kind of thing kind of shifts around with it. I did go back and double check the number to to make sure, it does look a little off to see that, but.
Okay, and and there's nothing in this salary proposal would negatively impact an employee. I E. you're not gonna get the cost of living and your salary's gonna go down.
How would you, I don't know, try to raise that question.
No employee's gonna take a hit.
I I think what they're saying is that people that left when they hired new people that came in at lower salaries.
I'm talking about an existing employee.
Yeah, no, there's no plan.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions on page four? Here and on, let's proceed to page five.
Just just why are the why is the work in this compensation for uh board of directors, for curiosity's sake?
So that is in case um you uh directors were to come in the meeting and trip on the step and actually hurt yourself coming to the board meeting. There you we are covered for that basically special meeting, you're in the once a month meetings on there for war comp.
Or potentially, if you're off at um, you know, uh
Off for sure.
A conference and you get in a car accident and um you're covered under our policy.
Or if you eat too many cookies or something, you have to go. It's tough on the left side over there.
Or you jerk one director's chain a little too much.
It's covered. Yeah.
Okay. Just just asking, I've never used to work with people who aren't getting paid. How was it?
Okay, page five, I guess I have one question here on advertising. Um you mentioned potentially rebranding, it goes from twenty-five hundred to twenty-five thousand.
That is kind of the number that we looked at now, it's gonna be, it's gonna be kind of tough to say all logos, you know, business cards, logos, trucks, uniform, everything. This is kind of the rebranding point, if we were to change the logo, kind of an idea what number it would take for the the whole department as a whole to change.
It's just a swag at what you what you guess it would cost?
Correct.
Yeah, because you're gonna buy, you're gonna buy the shirts either way.
Correct, well, I'm more more talking about like the, you know, if we have to repaint anything, if we have to do the truck, if we have to do business cards for all the, you know, manager. I mean, there's different costs that's gonna be over associated. Yeah, uniform wise, you're correct, it would be the same cost if they're in just putting in the same budget.
Decals, peel off, peel.
And just the logo itself, I know Lori did it last time we changed and, I mean, we had some people that in town that did it really, really cheap that we'd probably never find again. And I don't remember what we paid for them, but we're probably looking at double that or more.
Five dollars to ten dollars.
We need a new seal, right?
We need one?
No.
It doesn't say Trophy Club, man.
Get another smiley face, smiles to go underneath it. Okay.
Did you have any other questions on?
I well, I I noticed, yeah, it's more yellow here, but it's not a biggie. Uniforms went from seven hundred to twenty fifty, which is an interesting number. So I would guess for the admin section, we're gonna go to.
I've required everyone in admin, although they haven't all gotten them, Stephen, um to get safety shoes and hard hats and vests and some of those things in addition to uniforms. Um so we do have some new folks on staff and um trying to make sure we provide for that as well.
And there is, there is a, I do have a spreadsheet, another worksheet that does have all this on there. Um and just kind of broken down for there is also got, I also put directors' uniforms on there too. Uh did go ahead and budget uh for all the directors that have two shirts, so that would be also under the admin side. Um so and then I also, we have some new employees here, you know, we like to provide jackets, sometimes it gets cold over here, like have jackets for some of the, you know, utility building ladies and everybody that have here, so just some extra uniforms here, kind of see if they're option, if they wanna, we're taking that. And as you said, the the safety shoes in there, we are trying to get, take these shoes on for every employee here in the office, so they can go down to wastewater treatment plant and be safe.
Anything else, Bill?
Cap- capital outlays, I guess we're looking at GFA, uh which is the GIS mapping development. Asset management, boardroom audio and video improvement. Would somebody please help me understand what we're talking about there?
Yep, I'd be happy to, um is this the time to do it, or should we wait till we get to that capital sheet?
I can wait.
Okay, um I just, Stephen, can we point to where um, you know, we're almost to the bottom of page five, which shows the uh projected revenue and the projected expenses, and there is a little bit of a gap. Didn't we, I guess I'm having trouble seeing, I could swear it was here, but we have the contributions reserves. Um is that back in the, I guess.
There is, yes, back into departments, there is reserves for two hundred thousand from the water side and from the wastewater side.
Yeah, I saw that.
We we increased that to.
Well, I didn't increase, I wanted to show what the surplus is first, but we have the option to increase that to, you know, additional.
Okay.
To make it three hundred per department or however, to to kind of build the reserves instead of having a surplus there.
Yeah.
Going forward with that. And the rating. Show the surplus based on what we had originally, and then we can talk about the reserves.
And the revenue piece of, you know, we're we're gonna propose something on the base rate here in a little while, but um that was to increase that even a little bit more.
And we have, no, we have a capital page on page ten, which has all those broken down in there, but if you want to go ahead and move forward with what we have first, then we can go from there.
Yeah, any other questions on page five?
I'm I'm assuming the Fourth of July celebration, the reason that stopped is because they went over to fire side or something.
I'm actually not familiar with the history of that, we probably participated with the town when we were co-located.
That was a dis, from my understanding, that was a disagreement between the town and the mud, and the mud made a decision to no longer participate uh in sharing that cost, I don't know the details, that's conjecture, but.
Purpose.
I'm sorry?
It falls back to using funds for a public purpose, you have to name what the public purpose is. So if you donate ten thousand dollars to the town for a fireworks show, what is the, what serves the mud district? What is the public purpose of those funds for a water district? That's what it came down to.
And so the reason why that line's still added there is because if you look back in fiscal year fifteen, which I showed my data, it's there, so next year I would remove that line once there's no actual data there.
There was a uh who shot who.
My interest is if we were talking Fourth of July with the fire department, that's the cost, I just.
If he would pull your mic down, if he would pull your mic, talk into your mic when you're talking.
Sorry, uh sorry about muddying the water, just keep going.
Yeah, I I I guess my question would be, is it was it the mud's position at that time that uh spending those funds for Fourth of July was inappropriate, use of those funds? And maybe that's more of a Tony question, I don't mean to.
Are you willing to raise rates to give ten thousand dollars to a Fourth of July fund? That was when the wastewater treatment plant was starting and um you have to, it all comes from taxpayer funds or rate payer funds, so that's why things you you have to always look at, is it a public purpose to serve our district?
Okay, so it's a financial decision made at that time.
We have an attorney opinion on it somewhere, I could.
Okay. There are no other questions, we'll go to.
Sounds like the justification came back to truth in billing, and I'm a proponent of that. If we bill people for water and sewer service, we ought to give them water and sewer service.
Well, last year, we put out the fire that was caused by the fireworks.
And I think that's a free contribution to the Fourth of July. Is that that water's not billed, yeah.
Okay, we're now on page six, which is the beginning of the fire department.
All right, so I guess I can talk about this one here. So everyone's had a chance to see the budget for the fire department in our joint meeting last week. Um there has been some current changes, I have been in in contact with Chief Way uh and talked to him about what exactly we need to do to help get the rollback rate down. It's really gonna be good to kind of see an overall part of the tax budget to understand what we want to do with the fire, I guess it's probably the best way of saying this. So can we, would you like to move on to the tax side and see what the tax numbers are, since we know the expenses of the fire?
It's either that or we could come back to that equation after we finish.
We can do that.
Well, I think it's done because the rest of it is the fire budget, which we've already approved.
Really the highest profile thing that I wanted to talk about, there's there's some other detailed sheets in here.
I mean, really, on page eight of the fire budget, one of the other things you're gonna be looking at is the true up calculation that the mud uh basically is paying back the expense. Um there have been some, you know, maybe there's confusion about what exactly this does. Uh so the 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 budget that was presented to us on the joint meeting was the art, was the mud's portion of the expenses that the town occurs to to run the operations. So once we take out our expenses here and our revenue, this is what's currently remaining out there. Uh and then that what is basically the seven hundred fifty-nine thousand is what needs to go to the town to reimburse them as we split the cost. So then we do the calculation of sixty-three thousand per month. Currently, we're paying fifty thousand seven hundred and forty, I think it is, or uh which is what we pay per month to the town, which gets transferred out of the fire budget that we collect taxes on to pay the town for their half of the expenses or half of the expenses. So this is what it would go up to, based on everything being the way it is in the budget.
Okay.
Does everybody kind of understand that?
Yeah, I have a question back on page seven, if I could quickly, the the employee expenses on that page say expenses dash town. But those are actually the expenses that are split fifty fifty, is that correct? So it could be labeled expenses.
This is the expenses of the town, but this is our portion of the town's expenses, so this is half of the town's expenses.
Okay.
So the we, this is all of it that we would be responsible for.
Okay, but what's on that page is half, is fifty percent, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not totaled and then you take fifty percent of it.
Correct, it this is our half on here.
Okay.
There's labeled expenses of the town, and then we have expenses of the mud, but all, everything on this budget is is what we would be providing to them.
Label's incredibly confusing.
I can change the label.
Okay, go ahead with your.
All right, so we're gonna go on to page nine. So what we looked at on the on the mud side of the expenses is we looked at all of our expenses for the O and M and the INS side. Um we're unique as far as our O and M is a blended between the fire and the mud's O and M. The mud's O and M is being covered, which is non-departmental, which is auditing, legal. Um that's what's being provided by the taxes of the O and M side. Obviously, the O and M for the fires being everything you saw on the expense line there. Our INS is the debt service, so that pretty much i- is gonna go down, as long as you never get any more debt. It slowly starts to go down and decline as as time goes by and debt gets paid off.
Again, that's geo debt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The on page nine, the one that says required revenue O and M. Is that pure mud or is that combined water, uh fire and mud?
So.
We said it was legal and that type stuff.
Correct, so you're talking about the second part of it, so the first top is required revenue fire.
Yes.
That's the O and M part of the fire.
That's okay.
And the next one is the mud's portion of the of the O and M.
Okay.
And then you see it kind of broke down a little bit different than it was last year, uh we broke down the PID.
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna see rates over here where it says O and M tax rate for actually the mud's tax rate, and then you have kind of a swag, it's not, it's a swag. It's a number here, just so I can find a total revenue coming from the PID. Okay, so we have what's called basically PID surcharge, I don't know if you're, if everyone's familiar with the PID surcharge on there. Uh basically, it's the PIDs only paying for debt from whenever they were established. And we in two thousand fourteen, we had a bond out there, so they're only paying on the two thousand, uh I'm sorry, that's I, sorry, sorry, I confused you. They're only paying, back to that, they're only paying for the legal and the auditor part of the O and M, where we as a mud are paying for everything there.
So that's the reason why ours is about seventeen thousand more.
Correct, that's why there's a slightly, well, that's why you have a slightly different here as far as the rate is concerned. And then you're using the PIDs evaluation, which is on top, the net value, the net value of property on top, you're using that evaluation on their rate. Does that make sense, or do I need to explain that a little differently?
No, continue.
Continue, okay. All right, then we go on to the INS side, which is all the debt here. Uh so then you have the, this is what I was going in earlier about, this is the debt for the PID side, this is basically the bond in two thousand, the tax bond in two thousand fourteen. Uh so we find the information there as far as what the PID surcharge is gonna be there, and then underneath that, we have what the mud's debt INS part's gonna be too. And so all this together, you take it to the right side of the column, which has your tax impairment. You have fiscal year eighteen versus fiscal year nineteen. If you look across the board, O and M for the mud for the general fund has gone down. INS debt service tax has also gone down from last year. The only thing that has increased is the fire tax. That's based on the budget that was approved. So when you go down to uh, if you look at my yellow there, you see a max rollback rate. Um being a special water district here, that is a very important rate for us, meaning if we were to go, and this is a max rate at going eight percent over, based on property evaluations from last fiscal year to what this, they are currently this year. And if you look in the very top, that's our overall rate, which is the point one two one two eight. Now, the increase is all is is over the rollback rate here. The increase is heavily associated to the fire budget and the fire O and M part of the tax. So I I talked to the chief and him and I had some discussions throughout the week and last week, talking about it also about the increased expenses. And of the really, the the biggest expense he was kind of leaning on is the fire inspector that's gonna come on board um for PD thirty. Uh as you guys were here, uh guys and ladies were here, they kind of were hesitant to show the revenue side of what PD thirty's gonna bring, not knowing when exactly it's gonna come in. Uh about five o'clock this afternoon, fourth of Thursday afternoon, uh he did come to me saying that they were, they are projected now to get the full revenue actually in September of this fiscal year now.
And that was what, the two hundred grand?
Uh we're looking actually, comfortably two hundred grand, potentially on north side of that to about three hundred thousand.
So they're gonna get, they're anticipating getting that this fiscal year?
In September, they is gonna be, once they start breaking ground on the um parking garage in the apartment, they're gonna collect their money upfront for all the fees inspections, which will come in possibly in September now. Well, he's actually, he said actually be done in, going in August, but collecting in September, he's about a hundred percent sure on that.
So thi- this comes to a place where um we'll probably look for some guidance from the board, the there is, it isn't called a true up process, but there is a reference in the fire agreement that kind of provides for kind of end of year, working through the process, making sure that everybody pays their fair share of the fire costs. They they can have cost overruns or underruns, and they're mentioned in the agreement. Um on the town side, there is no reserve bucket for the fire department. So we have a fund for fire and we put money in there, and so it occurs to me that if expenses underwhelm revenues, that that should just roll into the expense budget and then, or into the fire budget. And then we could budget a line for prior year, prior year reserves contribution to next year's budget as a revenue. And that's how we do it on the mud side. Um, the town budgets differently, I mean, they just, you know, they don't, everything rolls back into the general fund and then they allocate out um to specific departments, um, which is fine, that's how most municipalities do it. But there's really no clarity on the process for that end of year true up. And what do we do with the, what I call ephemeral revenue streams? They um, you know, there's odd ducks that happen, right? This big surge in inspection fees come in, or you know, there's some reimbursement from, you know, going down to Houston and you know, paying all those guys overtime, but then there's a statewide reimbursement. And it's not gonna happen every year, but there's really no mechanism for the true up that's described. Um, we talked about that a little bit, we don't know if we want to open the agreement as a whole and try to get both boards to agree to whatever the amendment is. But perhaps um the staffs of the two groups could get together and talk about how that's gonna work and maybe put in just a small change in the contract that says this true up process is gonna work according to, I wanna say it's, there's two appendices in the fire agreement, like A and B. You know, put in one, it's appendix C that kind of describes the the process at the end of the year. And if we could get, you know, the boards, the board and council to approve that, um, you know, that would help provide some clarity for how we deal with these particular issues.
So so that said, Carmen, if we could come to an agreement on the process, are we now saying that this two hundred thousand dollars will have an impact this fiscal year?
So they're gonna be collecting it, from my understanding from just, like I said, just a couple hours ago, uh, collecting it in September. Uh, I'm guessing the full amount upfront, you know, right away, rather September, you know, right the end of September. So we can use that, um, basically, we would, we budget using it out of reserves, and then we would basically put a line in their revenue line on, like we did in prior year reserves, or bring it in to 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 put it back into reserves in a way, looking at it.
So in this, in the, in this fiscal year, we'd put it in reserves during the true up. And next year, for a part of, part of that going into the fire budget would be.
So reduce the amount that we owe.
Right, and we would recommend then setting the the overall tax rate at the rollback tax rate, so that um, we don't have to, you know, be subject to that petition.
I would say in general, I would not want to exceed the rollback rate, period.
Right now, uh, you know, the the regulation, the rollback rate is uh eight percent, we're at eleven and a half percent. Um, prior to knowing this new information for revenue, I did some calculations and two hundred thousand is the number to get us under where we need to be. Uh, two hundred thousand, put the fire budget O N M under last year's and put our rollback rate at uh one point, one, one, point one one five six eight, which pushes us under the rollback rate.
Something else that I've looked at is the required revenue O N M. Uh, that number that are that tax, and I'm a proponent of eliminating taxes and moving to fees. I don't know why that tax needs to exist. Now, the revenue needs to exist, but that tax, I don't know why it needs to exist as a tax.
Okay.
It's my, just my thought.
Give you an idea for, so we can, you know, one of the other ideas and and options were to eliminate our O N M. I believed in the calculation, we had to eliminate all the way down to about zero dollars to cover before the extra revenue came in, uh, to eliminate it completely. Right now, we're proposed to do about a hundred and thirty two thousand through that tax revenue. Um, that's gonna be for the property tax for that part, uh, so.
What, a hundred and thirty two where?
So, I'm gonna go back to here.
I'm looking at page nine and the one eighty four for the O N M, on the O N M tax surcharge rate.
So if you look, if you go back down to, if you, you're on, you're on what, page nine, yeah. So if you go back and look at, we're at a hundred and thirty two, three eighty four.
Where are you at?
That's right, there says revenue from mud tax, right under where it says, the blue chart where it says fiscal year mud O N M rate. Go down under that, it's a hundred and thirty two.
Oh, I see, one thirty two, three eighty four, yeah.
That's for the mud, and then you have the P I D, which is fifty one, nine thirty.
Okay.
If we reduce the O N M to zero, you're gonna have to combine both of those together in essence. Now, we have in the past, um, what has in the past, to reduce the amount of O N M and use reserves or use revenue to cover that, meaning reducing the, reducing the uh legal fees to cover to keep the rates down. Right now, we have a hundred and thirty seven, which is a big part of the non-departmental is is the legal fees.
That's why we don't have any reserves.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, yeah.
So the, the one thirty two, so that tax is being paid by everyone within the mud, correct?
Correct.
So if you, just to make sure everyone understands, so if you remove that tax rate, then the net costs of recouping those funds increase because it's been borrowed against a smaller group of people.
Yeah, exactly.
You just wanna make sure everyone understands that.
You're no longer taxing.
Does that make sense? It drops out the Westlake.
It, it, correct.
It it only includes people that are actually purchasing water and wastewater services from the district.
Yeah, exactly, so you would still retain, uh, I mean, if you, if it wa- if it was in the fee structure or in the rate structure somewhere, you would retain everyone that uses our services. But those folks who don't utilize our services that are currently being taxed would no longer pay, pay into that section.
But basically, was it worth to keep them, to make them happy? Well, I I think we've had one person from that side come over and express a concern. Um, and this is something where where there's been numerous debates, not only here, but on Facebook about
Yeah.
Um, whether or not there's a moral imperative uh to not tax a entity that's not receiving the service. Uh, my personal belief is, I haven't seen that moral imperative. Uh, the election results, in my opinion, were not reflective of that moral imperative, but a, a uh a group that found the current group lacking, and it had, and it didn't, and it wasn't related to that. And so I'd be interested in knowing how much is that? How much revenue would actually have to be made up, what percentage of that would be?
And it all depends on the the tax rate that gets gets adopted, that's, I can go off of last year's numbers, because I actually have solid numbers.
Yeah, just go off last year's numbers, just because it'll make it easier.
You're looking at about twenty five thousand.
Twenty five thousand?
Give or take there, I mean, it's a rough estimate, but just gonna give you an idea.
That's the delta that would slide across?
Just for the O N M side, yeah. Now.
Steven, can I ask you a question?
That's not the fire side, this is strictly the O N M.
Let's say we took the mud O N M, because the fire is also an O N M tax.
Correct.
They're combined under the state rules, but uh we separate them, so we, we're less than ten percent of what the current proposed fire O N M tax is, if you look at the two by comparison. What, how does the calculation work with um the P I D surcharge? So if we reduce the mud O N M tax rate to zero, would the P I D surcharge go to zero as well?
That's what I'm saying, we would have to make up the whole hundred and eighty five thousand that's in the.
Right, right now, they're covering a share of those other expenses.
Correct. Yeah, we gotta pick up that extra third.
If you took that, if you took that amount and took it off the tax side and put it on the fee side, then we can go directly to the uh P I D residents and have them pay it as part of the, part of the water bill. I mean, if you, if you were to say, okay, I'm gonna increase the base rate by two bucks, I'm, that's not saying two bucks is gonna cover it. If you're gonna increase the base rate by two bucks, then it goes clear across everyone who uses our services. So, I mean, that's just a concept.
Yeah, I wanna say it was uh uh, we were doing some math earlier today on on base rate changes there, it would take more than two dollars.
Yeah, cuz that's only, that's only a hundred and ten thousand dollars, so you would have to go three and a half, uh, almost four dollars.
You really have a hundred and eighty four, plus the additional, Westlake, so you're looking over two hundred thousand total.
Yeah.
And then, you know, divide it up that way.
Yeah, you're looking about a four dollars a month increase to the base rate to cover.
Yeah, you'd have the, you'd have the tax, you know, part of it, part of it is a, is a wish, but there's also the fact that you're gonna lose that delta of the folks that you're currently taxing and not providing services.
Correct. So I guess as our path forward, um, is it the staff recommendation that we go down the path of checking the town's uh willingness to create a um modify the existing agreement so that we can show this true up amount as a reserve that can be applied toward next year? Because the question becomes, what if that, for whatever reason, doesn't work and we end up in September? And we realize that we can't come to an arrangement?
Um, let me interject there, so um, you know, I think the staff is gonna recommend that you um don't set the tax rate in such a place where it would lead to a, the potential of a rollback petition, we're just not gonna do that. So one of the questions I asked Steven was, well, what if we, you know, what if we um showed all of the revenue for inspections in next fiscal year? And, you know, there was a delay on their project or what have you, and the the fees came in, but they didn't hit all of their projected revenue, right? So we're projecting a budget, a budget is a guideline. Then it would fall at the end of next year during the true up process, where we try to figure out what to do with that. Right now, the town does not keep a reserve for their part of the fire service. So should the, you know, should the town be keeping something of a, a little bit of a reserve for those things? Um, most of the issues would be probably in the arena of a capital failure, like a, you lose the engine on a fire truck, that's a pricey thing. Um, and it probably makes sense to have a little bit of reserve for that, or a mechanism for dealing with it. What if, um, you have a couple of firefighters really hurt badly? Um, then you're both paying a lot of overtime and you're dealing with some, you know, pretty big costs. Um, that is a cost that would go partly to the town. And they don't really, I mean, outside of their own fund balance, um, which I'm sure they keep a little bit of, there's really no mechanism whereby they're kind of allocating some of that reserve to our joint purpose.
Well, I know they have, last time I checked, it was like forty percent of their budget, if I'm not mistaken, was set aside in a reserve, so they have a general reserve amount. I don't think they specifically said, we have three hundred thousand set aside for fire, five hundred thousand set aside for this, they just reserved a bucket of money for any unanticipated cost.
And that's probably appropriate, um, you know, it's there, so that would be conceptually though, part of, you know, if you have a, if you underwhelmed your revenue projection and overwhelmed it with expenses, at the end of the year, you gotta true that up, and if they're, you know, so, but right now, there's no, I mean, it's really silent as to what that process looks like and how you might deal with year to year, you know, pushing savings into the next year, um, using it for budgetary purposes like an enterprise fund. Um, cuz municipalities work differently, everything goes in their general fund and then they allocate out a new budget. Um, so the agreement doesn't call out how that works.
It, I I thought you were going a different place with that question. Um, and so I'll go where I thought you were going with it. So let's say we, they assume that some of their revenue's gonna come into next year. And we set our tax rate at our, at the rollback rate.
Okay.
And for whatever reason, the revenue is short and there's a shortfall. Um, how do we normally make up for that difference? Because at that point, you would either take it from fund balance or, yeah, you would take it from fund balance, because I don't think we have a generic reserve set aside for fire.
So we do have a fire, I mean, we have, we have a fund account for fire. And prior to the agreement, there has been money that's been carried over when the mud was a sole operation of the fire. Um, my recommendation is we don't zero that out. The, we do not zero that out. Um, the the taxes, the revenue from taxes come towards the later part of the year. So we're gonna have some time in October, November, where we're still paying our portion, cuz based on the agreement, we have to still pay our true up. And this is really, it's really weird, cuz there's technically two true ups. There's a true up that we pay each month to the town that we set when we, when we adopt a budget. And then there's supposedly a true up at the end of the year that, you know, both entities get together and find out, you know, where their expenses were versus the revenue. But our part of the true up, we still have to pay, and there is, it is spelled out in the agreement that we have X amount a day to pay them the amount every single month and give them the money, basically, cut them check. I would hate to see us dip into it so much that either A, we're dipping into the gasby that's sitting there in reserve, or we're drawing ourselves low that we might have to cover the money until the funds start coming, taxes start coming in. But there is.
I'm sorry for interrupting you.
I'm sorry, there there is some money in there, uh, gasby.
Not necessarily the gasby.
Right, well, I gotta do the gasby to just track the difference out, so gasby is you know, the gasby is for the fire truck is a little over two thirty, alright, two thirty.
Total amount's five something.
Correct, and there's five something right now.
So about three hundred thousand dollars.
Now.
But let's talk, let's, let's talk about where that money comes from though, so everybody's clear. I mean, we make a projection about how much tax revenue is gonna come in. And sometimes you get more than you projected, and that's kind of how it works, and so if if they um don't spend all the money in their budget and a little more revenue come in on taxes than we had projected, then that money just kind of rolls into the fund.
Uh, I want, before we say there's three hundred thousand there, you understand, we still have three more months of paying the fi- the fifty thousand seven hundred that we have to transfer to the town every month, so you remember that still has to be paid this year.
Does that come out of that?
It comes out of that fund there, correct.
Oh.
Yes, that money, so the only thing that happens right away is the, uh, in February, we transfer the money, the I N S side of the, for the fire station for the I N S debt, we transfer that over to the I N S fund, uh, to get that out of the fire. But other than that, we, that money that's in there still has to be paid out each month.
So in reality, it's about a hundred and fifty's in there.
Well, you still have some tax, I mean, you you've got different things coming in, so roughly, I mean, two hundred thousand is possibly, we're probably constantly say there'd be two hundred thousand there. So that's what I'm saying, about what we're looking at. Now, the town has already uh approved on their side to do the sixty five thousand, and they, at that time, they said they can move a little bit more if we need to for the tax rate to feel comfortable. Uh, so, I mean, unless this project just completely falls apart, they know they're at least gonna collect pretty much a hundred to two hundred thousand on this part. Rather it happens this September, rather it happens in October, I mean, I don't know exactly when, but he's, he, the chief's scamming, he says he's pretty confident that it's gonna happen. There, and I guess they, whatever they just talked to him today about, that it's gonna happen first thing in September, and they're gonna start getting the money in there.
So, one, the line that says reserve is both gasby and operational within the fire department. That's an operational reserve and a gasby reserve. So if we run short on the fire department in the operational side, we'd have two choices, one of which is to chew up the gasby side or move some of our operational reserves across to support the fire department.
I wouldn't recommend that, but the the, I mean, the other option is, is the the seventy five thousand dollars is for the admission system going in there. At the end of the day, that needs to be capitalized by the mud. That should be, if you even see it in the agreement, that the mud is to pay for capital assets a hundred percent. That needs to be on our books, that really needs to be off of their budget, it shouldn't even be on that budget part of all theirs. It needs to be on our, our side of the budget, we should pay that, and technically, the gasby is set aside for capital. Granted, there's a vehicle coming up in four years' time, but, I mean, we have, we have used it for assets before. If it came down to it for the gasby part of the assets, now, I'm not saying that's what I recommend, but I'm, we're, we're talking about hypotheticals and worst case scenarios here. There is enough to cover this if something happened and the apartment just didn't go and they just pulled the, pulled the trigger and said, you know, we're putting, putting trees back and we're gonna let it go back to where it was, so. I I I would recommend, just as a staff, and I've talked to Carmen about it before, that we use, basically, we, you know, either we can, we can fund it through the reserves, say, we're gonna put a hundred thousand dollars in, you're gonna put a hundred thousand dollars as a town in there knowing, and then whatever comes the difference, we, the next true up is when all that will get back into the reserves. Uh, I would recommend that the town, whatever they collect, they collect two hundred fifty thousand, that the town issues the money back to us as the mud. We put it in our fund, we do a true up next year, this goes in and helps our rate for next year. Because I've heard I talked to Wade, and I'm sure Chief Carroll in there, he is projecting it to go up again next year, and we have, we're gonna have the same exact issue we have right now. We need to have something.
Budget, yeah. Total fire budget.
Correct, the total fire budget, he's projecting the things are gonna move up, uh, I know he wants to put that sixth person on the rotation, I mean, there's stuff coming forward that we know is gonna increase again. If you look at there, our O N M is like, like Carmen says, ten percent, I mean, such, our part of the O N M is so small, we really don't have a lot of influence in the O N M part, it's the fire that has a lot of influence. If they're gonna go up another twenty percent, twenty five percent, we're gonna be in the same position again, where are we gonna collect it, how are we gonna get into the rollback rate?
Didn't you also say, Steven, we were talking that the fees that they're collecting are kind of collected all upfront? Which is maybe why it's going into this budget year?
It is now, uh, this is, alright, so we've, we've had this in for a couple of years now, and we haven't really had a true up, because apparently, there really wasn't any fees really collected before. Maybe like a hundred dollars or something small for sprinklers, now, they're actually trying to collect fees for it going forward, and I guess the new system that Chief is telling me. And I guess the new system that Chief is telling me is that they're gonna collect them all upfront. So, no matter how long it takes inspector, how many times inspector has to go out, they're collecting the fees upfront for the, for the job that needs to be done based on the square footage, I believe.
Right.
The way he said it. So, it's a little bit different now than it would have been a couple of years ago.
I think though, even, you know, I talked to Tommy Uzi today, when, when we do a driveway repair and put in some concrete, we have to pull a permit. And, um, so they'd have someone come out and inspect the rebar and we have to pay for that upfront too. So, it's kind of, it's at the time the permit is drawn that the revenue comes in.
So, my recommendation, like I said, is, is to have them provide the funds, uh, kind of like how we do the, we, we have a pledge uh, for ten thousand dollars that they kind of get. Uh, you know, we, we associate that money in there. We know it's coming every year. Same kind of thing is put it back into the fire fund. We know everything in that fire fund is being spent strictly for the fire. If, you know, we don't really have a lot of flexible, flexi- and our expenses. Uh, T M L is really the only thing that I don't know a hundred percent this is what the rate's gonna be. Uh, we get that in the next few months here with, they just shut all the rates. But, I mean, we know what our bond, you know, we know what the rent's gonna be. You know, we know, we know what our cost overall is gonna be for the fire side. Uh, the, the town has a lot more flexibility in what they're, I mean, they could easily go eighty percent and have twenty percent extra that they didn't spend. We need this true-up. We need to try to find a way. We have a good setup, the way the surcharge works for, for the P I D surcharge. I mean, it's a good true-up there. I don't like that it's calendar year, but at least it's a good true-up and we know kind of what stuff's to go. And I think that's something that we need to look at in the fire side is how we can do the true-up and how we can use it to help us in the next fiscal year to keep us from the same dilemma.
Okay. Any other questions, Bill? Okay.
Alright, so, um, just in general, I think we're, I'm gonna recommend that the board, um, or the, yeah, the board adopt, uh, I keep getting confused between board and council, that the board adopt, um, um, you know, certified tax rate that doesn't exceed this rollback rate. If we could get under it a couple of, well, that'd be hundreds of a point. That would be good just for sake of argument. But, uh, we're gonna continue to work with the town. You know, one thing that's not totally clear in the agreement is we have an approved budget, um, and that was approved by both board and council. But it was noted in that meeting that, you know, hey, there's some things that, you know, small things that change from here through the rest of the year um, until we adopt the budgets. And both, you know, town and mud have to adopt budgets later in the year. But the certified tax rate gets adopted on the, it's the twentieth of August, I think is our next board. So.
For, for those on the board that's not, not familiar with certified tax rate, what that is is basically we're going to the public and saying we will not adopt a tax rate that is greater than this amount. We're not saying that we're gonna adopt that tax rate. What we're saying is the tax rate will be less than that.
It's more of a not to exceed.
It's a not to exceed thing, so.
And I have to go in, publish, and we have to have it before our September meeting. Uh, it has to be published out there so the public knows what we're going forward with and what we're gonna do.
Public hearing and all, I think it's got a public hearing, doesn't it? Yeah.
Alright. Um, do you guys want to talk about page ten?
Don't let staff address that.
Capital. Okay. And so, handful of elements. This is just next year's capital budget. So, how, we've kind of, just last year, um, we had three vehicles that we replaced. We had originally planned on financing all of them through some form of a, what I'd call a revolving credit line. I think going forward, that's probably not a bad idea to look at. But under the rules for muds, um, we cannot finance anything for more than three years without approval from T C E Q and that includes pickup trucks. Generally, on-call truck, we have one that's ready for replacement. So, we're showing it here as a twenty-eight thousand dollar expenditure. Um, on the bigger vehicles, um, we're gonna, we have a, um, replacement of the TV truck, for lack of a better word, our sewer line inspection truck, um, that we're showing in the debt service budget because we're planning on doing a lease purchase agreement as recommended by council, same sort of arrangement we have for the Vactor truck. But paying for just the smaller pickup trucks on an, on a pay-go basis. So, we're just gonna budget it here as a one-time expenditure.
So, the, uh, that video truck isn't on this page, under capital out lease, it's under lease.
It's on actually page twelve.
Okay.
We can go in there or, you know, we can talk about.
Well, let's finish up this page.
Just finish this page before we go down.
For the wastewater side, we don't have a lot there, although, um, well, just for general purchases, we put in, um, a portable generator for lift stations. So, we have a, a price estimate of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to go through every one of our lift stations, put in quick connects, um, control panels, all the stuff that we did at lift station number two. Um, I've split that up to do it over two years because, you know, some of our lift stations are just simply not that old. Uh, but we would like to get to the point where all of them have the ability, um, to get a, a portable generator brought to them, plugged in, take them off the grid. Our, our most common power failure mode is we lose regular power. And, um, you know, the, the cost and the pain of pumping down those lift station pits and into a truck and then hauling it back to the wastewater plant, it's a lot easier to put a portable generator there and run it until, um, until which time is the power comes back on.
Lift station one has a generator, right?
It does. It's the, it's the only one. Um, no, I don't think that was in the estimate. We just estimated all the other ones, right, Mike?
Correct.
So, um. That, that was a budgetary estimate. So, I, I did try to spread that over a couple of years, but we think, you know, now that lift station number two is fully equipped for that, we oughta go ahead and just get the generator. I'm told now that they, um, by Mike actually, that, that you can get one that scales from very small power output up to fairly large power output. We do have quite a range of lift station pumps, maybe from two or three horsepower up to forty horse. And so, getting, you know, getting the, the generator that'll handle that range of power supplies that we can just hook up to a truck and haul over there is our objective. So, that's what that piece is.
We didn't have a portable power generator?
No.
Did, so the one that we bought out of Florida, wherever it was, went to wastewater treatment plant, wasn't a portable. That's a fixed.
It's fixed.
Okay, thanks.
Going back up to the top of the center column, um, there were a couple of joint projects with the town that were actually on the previous year's budget but got deferred. So, we have water line replacements there at two seventy-five. Mike, I don't know if you know where the budget estimate for that came from. Have they done some preliminary engineering or?
No, I actually got that. That was a quote from a contractor to go in there and actually replace that. And Carnoustie's actually on there that we just had the big main break on.
Good. Good.
So, so the town is planning to do Carnoustie?
They are not.
Okay, so this is, this is just for us.
Strictly mud because next year, we are going forward with Sundance Court and Meadowbrook with the town, uh, in the joint projects, but they don't have actually anything next year that we didn't budget for this last year. So, we're gonna be carrying over that to cover those expenses.
Those funds. I mean, they, we, we set aside funds, so they should move, move forward.
Yeah, we set aside a hundred and sixty-nine that's gonna be carried over.
Okay.
The timing and everything, we're not just gonna get it all done in this fiscal year. So, I figured, well, you know, we got a lot of A C pipe out there. So, we might as well go ahead and continue on ourselves replacing some of our problem spots.
Um, I don't know, Mike, what, what's, um, for valve replacement? We know we've got, um, some challenges, but.
Yeah, so every year I put this in there, we always go around and find some valves that, you know, are not working properly and everything. And usually, we'll have a contractor come in and try to replace them. I know last year, we did all the valves up here across from the golf course and everything, which helped us quite a bit. So, we just, we just do that as a general replacement every year.
Do we have a feeling, and here again, this gets into asset management, on when certain valves were replaced in the system? Do we have any, any documentation, any data that's especially on the east side? I mean, you know, neighborhood's forty years, forty, fifty years old.
We know the one in Mr. Walsh's front yard was replaced this last year.
Okay.
That was down on Indian Creek, so.
I mean, unless we've had an issue with them, they probably haven't been replaced.
I remem- okay, I remember seeing a presentation that talked about going out and closing water valves and noticing the torque required and determining the, the status of the valve based on the torque.
That'd be a condition assessment process.
We haven't done anything like that.
We usually turn our valves manually. We do have an electric valve wrench that I found over the years that.
Creates as many problems as it solves?
Yes.
Yeah, I understand that. But, I mean, what I'm saying is just, if you just take a torque, torque wrench
Yes.
and torque it and see what it takes to move it.
So, a lot of those are, I know we've got one right now on that side of town that we've come across. We're like, hey, you know, let's turn this valve and everything. We're like, okay, well, this valve is not turning. We can't get it to turn the way it should be. So, that gets on our valve replacement list.
But we don't, but as part of a normal check process, we don't go out and check a valve and say.
Yes, we do. We do have a valve exercising program. So, this winter, you know, when we slow down and everything, the guys will start grabbing their sheets and everything. Keep a paperwork and everything. They'll notate on there, you know, how many turns, did it work good? Does it look like there's any issues with it?
Super. Thank you.
How ma- how many years of data do we have on that program, Mike?
Geez, I don't know. I s- I kinda s- was the starter of that program. I would say we have three or four years, maybe? Two or three at least.
Good.
I'm aware that many utilities have literally hundreds or thousands of valves that have never been exercised, uh, which is, um, that's scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know it's not gonna work.
Um, we budgeted some for fencing, this one, the hundred thousand here really, um, is kind of intended to be for, um, this wood fence out here in the parking lot. So, it looks like it's falling apart. It's got a few holes in it. Um, I think Mike had an estimate for that. It, does this also include, um, I think it's a back-of-the-napkin estimate. It wasn't a real bid, right? It was, or a quote.
I got quotes from a fencing company. I don't remember what, I think both the quotes were o- were they over a hundred thousand or right at?
Might have been a hundred, hundred and ten.
Okay, so I think this is for actually restaining the existing fence that we put up a couple of years ago and replacing this with the same type of fencing that we put up. So, it's actually concrete footer, the same ten-foot.
But there's no fencing in here for any of the lift stations?
Um, it looks like we, um, I, I wanna have an annual budget item for just fencing. So, I think, you know, we've got that, the well out on the frontage road, it's got the fence, it's halfway over. They all look like, you know, prisons, um, which is fine. I, I think I've mentioned to a few of you, I, I do like the T R A standard for their lift stations. It's got a little bit of ornamental iron, they're taller. Um, they still allow you to see in there, so it's not like, you can get an encampment of people who shouldn't be behind the fence, um, in there without being able to see them when you drive by. So, um, I guess I had thought that we had put some of that on the wastewater side too.
And going forward, you had ten thousand going in for the next four years. It's gonna be replacing out different lift stations, what we have.
So, there was a big expenditure for this fence over here, which is kind of falling apart. And they've already done the backside fence, well, like you said, on a
Yeah.
concrete, um, base and, but it's already a few years old. And the lady who had all the campaign signs right here at the end, when you look at the outside of her fence, you can see her sprinkler pattern right on the, on the stain on the fence, so. Want to keep it for a few more years. We need to re- refinish it. Um, for lift station upgrades, again, we had, um, a, a quote for around a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen to do all of those light controls, quick connects, that sort of thing. I spread that over a couple of years. We have a list of parts that we're supposed to get as a part of the wastewater project. But we can clearly see that we need to look at that carefully, um, also as a part of the C M M S program. But to say, you know, what, you know, what, what's the lead time on this motor? If it takes six weeks to get it in here, we oughta have at least one spare. If we've got five of them, that, that's sort of a question. So, we're budgeting some money from that. At this point, that's a swag. We, we're really not sure. Um, there's thirty thousand here, um, for the lift station one engineering piece. And the implant water system is actually for using effluent water from the wastewater plant for in-plant purposes. So, um, I think I've gotten everyone but you, Mr. Chapman, uh, out on a tour. We're gonna get that done. Hopefully not on a hot afternoon.
Yeah, you know, let's, let's put it off till it gets a little cooler.
But basically, we have, we have some screens and other internal processes that use water. During the construction process, they've been using potable water, which is kind of a, means to wash off sewer screens, not the best use of water. And that old equipment failed. It was not a part of the wastewater plant upgrade. So, Mike's got some quotes on that. This is also a swag. I don't know if this will cover all of it.
This is a pretty, this is a pretty sound number.
So, basically, what this is, is a, just a pump and plumbing system out at the plant. So, you've got gray water. I'll call it gray water, but we know it's clean water. It's going to like gray line. But it's, yeah.
It runs everything from our belt press to our grit chambers to our rotary drums up top and everything. So, I mean, it's, it's been pieced together for quite a few years and I had to go back and actually look through invoices where we've had a pump rebuilt here and there. And actually, when I got over there, one of the pumps was down and another one went down. So, we've had some issues with this, this year and I've had people out. And the antiquated system that's there, it's easier to put in a new system than fix the other one. In fact, the gentleman I had out actually lives in Trophy Club.
I know this is kind of backtracking that stuff a little bit, but you're gonna have one, um, emergency generator. What are the odds of more than one lift station having issues that need backup power?
I don't know the answer to that question. It really depends on the nature of, of the power failure. Certainly, there are other ways to get emergency generators and maybe we'll need more, um, over time. But right now, we only have one lift station that's equipped with.
To do that. But I wa- I was just thinking, uh, you know, I'm in, where I use U P S quite a bit for computers and that stuff, whether it makes more sense to have a, basically, a generator slash U P S on each site. Because if we have a big encore outage, every lift station's gonna be out.
That's right.
That's true. And if we had a situation like that, we do have a maintenance contract, emergency maintenance contract with the generator company. So, we could call them if we needed more generators.
I di- I just wondered if it would be more sense to have a, you know, like permit-type installations on each lift station rather than, than a.
Pretty expensive.
I was gonna say, that would be great. I would love to go that way, but very expensive.
But you're looking at.
In a natural disaster.
Yeah, it's like, oh, in a natural, yeah, it's like, how many, how long does it take to fill that particular lift station up before you need to pump it down and can you, can you, how many can you chain and, and keep them all down?
Or someone running between lift station and lift station with that emergency and pumping a little bit out each time to.
I wonder if we could find some, uh.
If you're in a heavy rainstorm, that's, that's pretty hard to do.
I wonder if we could find some, uh, M A one A. I think it's M A one A. Wasn't that the power card?
Yeah.
M A one A. Uh, I mean, if we could find some, some of those in salvage that were usable, I mean, that's a power card that won't quit. Then you'd have to have an aid shop to keep it up.
I would, I would say this is the first step. That's a, a great question. And, um, you know, again, you know, trying to find one that'll run the full gamut from three horsepower up to forty. You know, it sounds like we can get that. We've, we have a budget swag in here for that. But maybe it's getting a couple, one that's a little smaller, one that's a little bit bigger to get the range proper. We do have at lift station number one, a permanently mounted generator that's under our generator maintenance contract. So, that's ten percent of them right there. It's, it's like you suggested where it has a fenced enclosure. It's got a, um, it's got a generator in there. So, uh, maybe some of the other big ones would be suitable for a permanent generator.
Once you have one of those transfer pads, you could either upgrade it to a permanent or just keep it with the thing as long as you got the transfer pad in there first.
That's what we just put on lift station two when we upgraded it.
Speaking of generators, how about that little power generator out here that's caused us headaches?
I looked at replacing that. Replacement quote I got, I figure we could probably keep dumping some money into that for a while. It was about, uh, over fifty thousand, maybe sixty-five thousand dollar bill to replace that generator. So I was like, well, you know, I've put a lot of maintenance into it already. So let's go one more year and see if it'll just run. So I thought that was a little, a little.
The one that runs this system.
Yeah.
Our building.
Okay, so we have a power outage here.
And I will say, we've had the power out here recently and it did run fine.
Okay.
True, true test.
Run to failure, huh?
Yeah. So, um, under administration, we have a bunch of pieces. Um, so let me talk about the first two together. G I S, G I S mapping development and C M M S or asset management development. So, um, G I S is geographic information systems. Um, currently, for example, um, the, the metric for a good, uh, well-run, um, sanitary sewer collection system versus a bad one is how many S S Os per hundred miles of pipe. It's a metric. Now, you can compare yourself to other utilities. We don't know how many miles of pipe we have. Uh, we, we just don't know. Um, we have an estimate for how many manholes, but we don't have a clue how many miles of pipe. So the first thing to do is to put it in a G I S system. So you have a good map. Um, there are a lot of tools that come along with that now. So, um, for example, um, computerized maintenance management systems allow you to issue work orders, to track the results. Um, you can do things like, well, we had a, a main break over here. So we, this is how many hours it took to fix it. Um, these are the other costs. Save them in the system and then you can go back and look and say, well, in the last five years, we've had four breaks on that. It's cost us this much. And maybe it's time just to replace that pipe with a more reliable pipe than, you know, keep fixing it. So, um, right now, we really don't have anything other than the work order system attached to the billing system. So, for example, if a customer calls in and says, I don't, I don't think you read my meter properly. Um, they issue a work order to Mike's folks and they go out in the field and inspect the meter. It's tied back to the address and the metering system. But it's a fairly simple thing. So Mike's used it, for example, to issue work orders for his, his guys to go out and inspect the vehicles. But it's basically a whole sheet of stuff and then just a, a typed in instruction at the bottom. And it doesn't save it like a database where you can say, well, you know, we, we have, we have to go out every three months and, and do an oil change or an air filter.
So is this, is this, let me interrupt just to ask, is this, this is larger than just the infrastructure in the ground?
Oh, absolutely. Um, so, um, what we're hoping to get is a place where we could have a work order management system that has a backend database. Um, you can find them relatively inexpensive, but, you know, we just don't have the staff capability or numbers to really kind of get over the hump to where, you know, you have critical mass to get everybody using it, make it usable. Um, and, um, many times the two things are tied together. So, for example, in vertical infrastructure, like a wastewater plant, or even over here in the yard, the relative geographic location of that asset doesn't matter too much. I mean, you just say, here's all the assets and we tie them to this one point. And you can issue work orders. I mean, the system works fine. The real value comes, um, out in the geographically distributed asset. So we can go out and in the G I S system, G P S, a manhole, this is where it's at. Go G P S the other one. They can draw straight lines between them. They can measure those lines. And then the lines in the G I S system, you can, they have attributes, right? It's really a graphical interface to a database. So you can drop it down and say, this is what the pipe's made of. This is the year it went in. Um, this is, you know, the last time we inspected it, those kind of information pieces. So there's a good chance that these two have become a combined project. Um, I've let both of the engineers that have been approved by the board know about this. They both have some capability in both of these areas. I think one of them, um, had proposed something along this line. So, and we plan on going out with an R F Q to our two approved engineers and asking them to give us a proposal um, on how they could help us with this and get to where it's usable. Um, subsequent year, we probably wanna get into some of the portable tablets. Right now, um, you know, Mike can read on his phone what the level on this tank is or what pumps are doing over here. In fact, he was on vacation the last two weeks and he was doing that when he shouldn't have been. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to let go, but, uh, we have had a pretty busy two weeks. I'll say that. Um, so those two projects together, I put some extra money in there. I think we can get to, um, critical mass on those two projects. Hire in some folks to come in, help us get these things recorded. Um, you know, there is a fair amount of work to get the inventory made. Um, and that's our hope, so.
I, I do have a couple of questions. One, you, you say development. I'm assuming we're taking off the shelf products and just enhancing them or customizing them for our purposes?
Right.
We're not developing from scratch on this stuff.
No, no, not at all. So.
Say that, those, those are, that's a pretty horrendous project to say the least.
Mike says he has good Fortran skills.
I was a great Fortran pro.
I cut my teeth on Fortran, so.
I, and Kelly doesn't even know what we're talking about.
The programming language, very old programming language. Very mathematically oriented programming language. Uh, second thing, uh, in, for the future, are you looking at the C M M S to like do meantime between failure type predic-?
Yes, all of the, all of those sorts of things. So even, even just.
They want it money that way.
Yeah, um, and there's, there's other things you can do. Um, it, it's, um, you can just kind of track what your total costs are, right? So lifecycle costs on a machine. I had this situation in Utah. We had a lime feeder which required all kinds of babysitting, but it was cheap, right? You could buy this machine. It was a dry powder feeder in a water treatment plant. They were feeding lime. It was caustic. You stick your arm in there and all your skin would come off. We didn't, we didn't have the safety equipment back in the day, but, um, you know, we went through and showed that if we bought this more expensive piece of equipment, we'd actually save half of the money we were spending on having people babysitting this machine four hours a day. So you gotta put all those costs together and look at lifecycle costs. Meantime between failures is another great way to look at things. And, um, you know, just going back to things like I'm having a G I S layer where we're tracking main breaks, right? What, what's the history of that? We do have some anecdotal evidence. We've got some, uh, old timers here who remember when that main broke and they remember where the valves are. But, you know, over time, we lose that institutional knowledge. So this is a great place for it. Now, Mark, I want you to know that, um, the ones that I've been looking at are actually cloud-based and they've become a subscription service. So the, the development gets done on stuff running on other people's servers. But we have accounts that we can come into and our guys in the field could, you know, bring out a tablet to a, a main break at two o'clock in the morning. They could open it up and say, well, geez, when was the last time we did this? Or where's the upstream and downstream valve?
Where are the valves?
Um, those kind of questions, um.
Yeah. Your question about the valves, this, this.
Where's the valves? Yeah.
Where the valve is, how old it is, when it needs replacement? Are, are you gonna let the directors have access to the system? I knew that answer before I even asked it, but I thought I'd try.
I, I at least would have enjoyed allowing him to tap dance around the answer before you bailed him out.
I, I wanna, I wanna make a highlight here. Something very important was said that I don't think has ever been said in this room before. And you said it, Mark.
Uh-oh.
Meantime between failure. It was like, wow.
He got so excited, he rubbed my leg.
I'm not gonna go there.
No, no.
Organization's been run to failure. And meantime between, the organization's been run to failure. And meantime between failure is critical in an operation. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Murphy always strikes at the wrong time. That's why you use it, me- meantime between failures.
Yeah, that's, that's the gear I've been working on for thirty years is to minimize that.
Good. I love it.
Keep banks and A T Ms up and running twenty-four by seven by three sixty-five.
I love it. Just love it.
Cause it's expensive if you don't.
Yep.
Very expensive.
Okay.
That's, that's our hope for those two, two programs. Um, I hope I've got the right amount of money budgeted there. But we're gonna ask for qualifications, probably ask the P M's from our two engineering firms to come in and tell us how they go about doing this. Um, what their level of effort would be and that sort of thing.
Do you wanna, wanna run it past me? And I can take it to my sources out there, cause I've got a lot of people out in the various industries and that stuff. I can do some vetting of whoever you pick.
There, there's actually a, a different approach we could take on this. I mean, right now, these are both, um, we have two engineering firms that provide these kind of services. So, you know, identifying locations of manholes, working with G I S is pretty common in engineering circles, but it's not exclusive to that. And this would fall under the category of professional services and I can't go out and select those people. We can, we can go through a R F Q process and bring you a recommendation. Um, I have let both of the firms that we have under contract that have previously been approved by the board know this is coming. And they both have this capability. So, um, you know, I guess if you wanted to suggest that I be broader about it, I'm happy to do that.
Is, is there increased cost to leaving it to engineering firms versus someone that, that necessarily? Because this is in my, I, I guess from my perspective, this is not necessarily something that requires an engineer to do. And so by going the engineering route, you're likely to pay a higher hourly rate versus a more generic rate. So that's something that I would want you to consider as you.
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of pieces there, right? I, I found a firm in Canada that runs, um, a C M M S program in the cloud. They will come out and help you get like all of your assets into the system. You know, define them by, here's the serial number, here's the, you know, the voltage, all that. I mean, there's a lot of this grunt work that goes into that. You don't, you don't need to pay someone two hundred dollars an hour to do that kind of work and they don't. I mean, typically the engineering firms will have a G I S tech or a CAD tech doing a lot of that work. Um, but these folks would bring people in and help you get it up to critical mass. So for me, the biggest problem with any software project is getting it to where people are using it on a daily basis. So if you can get to that point, even if it's only eighty percent complete, you've kind of got over the energy of activation and you're, you're headed towards some sort of a steady state going forward. Um, you know, I, I, our point here is we need this. I, I think it's something that we need in a significant way so we can make smart decisions about our investments going forward. Um, and I'm hopeful that this is enough. So we've taken a swag at it, um, you know. The, the group in Canada, the actual software licenses were super cheap. It's the, it's the effort of getting all of the assets in, um, that costs the money. So, but they would come all the way down and do it and.
No, assuming they can get across the border.
Right.
Oh, I'm not kidding. I've got some tech friends that can't get across the border right now. So they're, um. But.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wanna make sure they're accurate, G I G O.
So boardroom and audio video improvements. So speaking of.
Garbage out, G I G O.
S- speaking of, um, getting over the hump on critical mass, um, we have, um, purchased, or I guess subscribed is a better word uh, in this year's budget to peak software for board packet development. So it's a cloud-based service where we can create agendas, put attachments on it. Um, board members can come into it from the outside. They can look at those agendas. They can make their own comments. Um, and it's a subscription. So we pay for it every year. Um, it's a part of the, I forget the name of the other. It's under Agranicus, but there's a name for the full package, right?
Just they're, um, they're under Legistar, which the.
Legistar, that, that's what it was. So a lot of bigger towns use Legistar and they have all these approval items for board issues uh, or board, uh, agenda items, that sort of thing. Um, one of the problems though is that we videotape our, our board meetings. We have in the back room antiquated video and video editing equipment. It's been here for fifteen years or so. I mean, it's pretty old. Um, and we're aware that, um, you know, audio and video stuff has really improved in the last five, ten years. Um, under the right circumstance, we'd like to take that peak software subscription and buy the full package, which includes, um, taking all of the video, the agendas, and then later the minutes. They effectively publish a frame in the cloud, which we can make appear on our website like it's internal, if that makes sense. So when people come and look at our website, they can see the agendas, but it's, it's, the whole software package is running in the cloud. And we did not get the video stuff because our video and audio, frankly, is not up to snuff to run in that package. Um, this is a swag number as well. We are anticipating a more refined cost estimate. I suspect we're over on this. Um, but we wanted to put in enough stuff that we could, for example, get rid of that big T V and, uh, maybe just put something right here on the counter. So it could involve modifying the D I S so you can, you know, see your tablet right here. If you made comments on your board packet, you can just pull them up and look at them to be connected to the internet here. Or if someone's given a presentation, you can look at it a little closer right, right on your tablet up here. So that number is a swag. Again, it's gonna be refined over the next month or so. Um, that's what that's for.
Do we have any concern about if you're, if we're going to have a, like a common cloud where all the directors are getting into? Any worry about the Open Meetings Act issue if we're communicating to each other through this software? It could be.
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it really has that mechanism. What you get is you'd be able to log in under your name, uh, look at the agendas, but you can't come onto our network even then, right? So, you know, we keep you guys out of our network. We, we don't let you, uh. Um, that's, that's it, but.
You go back and you keep me out even farther.
You're a secure.
The notes would need to be archived. So whatever you write in there would be an archived document and it would be subject to public information.
Right. So it, it does allow you to, but keep your comments right on, you know, I wanna bring this up in the, in the meeting according to this agenda item. So you can do it right on a pen, on a tablet or what have you. And then your notes are saved in your account. I don't recall that it had, um, interaction between, um, in between the board members, but it did have a mechanism for board members under our rules to have two of you submit an agenda item, uh, propose an agenda item. So it had that ability. Um, but, um, outside of that, there wasn't really room for.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because there's a, everywhere you look, they're doing collaboration software.
Yeah.
Where everybody gets in and starts talking, changing. That to me would be an Open Meetings Act problem.
Oh, yeah.
It would. If you, if you pushed the information up and then it became accessible to all the board members.
Yeah.
That would create an open meeting.
Yeah, you'd be in trouble.
Violation.
Violation, yeah.
Okay.
So that's what that is. Again, I think that number's gonna be refined, uh, in a.
Let's get to the next one.
Southward way, um.
I'm hungry now.
Phase two wastewater treatment plant, um, security improvements. Um, we've done the badges and the video cameras here and over at the water plant. We've added some, uh, door, uh, door opening badges over at the water plant side on our new badge system. Um, but at this point, um, the wastewater plant is still under construction by Weber Kadaqua and we did not want to change order of their contract. So we've deferred those improvements until after they're out of there. Um, this, I don't think covers everything. This certainly covers most of it. Um, in terms of, we're gonna add some door access, um, obviously gate access using a badge, um, remote video, um, so that it can be recorded here at the site. And, um, and we can see what's going on both at the entryway to the gate, but on the plant side itself. Um, so that's what that's for. Um, for budget software, um, Stephen, um, labors greatly on these spreadsheets that are, this is the way we've always done it. Um, but there are some good software packages out there that, uh, make this, make our life a little bit easier. I, I do think he spends a little too much time, um, just cause we're working with Excel, right? We're doing these budgets in Excel and there's, there's programs designed for this for government entities. So trying to make his life a little easier, make Lori's life a little easier with the peak software, get that fully implemented. Those are part of our objectives.
I would use the term rather than easier, more productive.
More productive, yes. Thank you.
I do wanna say with the budget software, you know, I do wanna lean more going towards the next five years. Uh, going the next five years, looking, looking forward. Uh, the software that we have, S C W, is unable to hold more than just input of information in one year. Um, so I have reached out to several other entities around us who use S C W and surprisingly, zero percent of them use it for budget software. They have something outside that they use for their budget and they just input the data into S C W. So hence why we're doing everything through a bunch of worksheets in Excel.
How soon can we do this?
As soon as we get some approval.
I was gonna say quickens better than that.
Um, finally, um, I, I think I mentioned to this, this to the board previously, um, the point-to-point communication slash town project. So the town has a, a project to distribute, um, internet access throughout the town. It does involve putting towers in several locations with point-to-point, um, radio transmission technology. In talking with them, you know, they would have had to have mounted a couple of their towers, one here, one near the wastewater plant where their maintenance barn is. We wanna piggyback on that project. So, um, their total project cost with like nine towers was sixty thousand. Um, we, we would share the cost of the towers, but put in our own, uh, separate repeater. So it's a separate network for controls, but that would save everybody's costs, right? We'd be picking up for some of their towers, part of. But that would save everybody's costs, right? We'd be picking up for some of their towers, part of it. This again is a swag and I think they're actually wanting to start this project in this fiscal year, but they've already had it in their budget all year and they're kind of, it's kind of dragging towards the end of the year. So, um, we are waiting for a refined cost estimate on this. But I did put it in next year's budget for that. So that is the end of our capital budget discussion.
Okay. Is there anything else, Steph?
The, uh, VATCON camera's on page twelve.
Yeah, so page eleven's pretty, I mean, it's pretty, it says why, I mean, it's the same thing. It changes, you know, as the payments go along. And, uh, so page twelve, there's a couple of things I want to kind of address on here. If you look in the kind of grayish purple, uh, that is for the series two thousand fifteen revenue for the sixteen-inch water line. That's what we were speaking about earlier today. This is a number based on, you know, if you turn me in the, if we want to go on thirty or twenty, depending on how long that you want to issue the bond and then how much the bond's actually going to be at the end of the day. These are numbers I'm not sure yet, so these are numbers based on what the information I have here in front of me.
So this is twenty, based on the maximum?
Correct. This is based on the maximum amount, so I'm going off of twenty and then going off of the right at seven million for it, which we do the seven point two. So this is kind of an idea of what payment it's going to be for the first year. We would skip the first interest payment, then you know, you know, we would be able to get it in line in September with our other bond payments. So we'd have the interest and principal in September.
And this is the water pipe from us to Fort Worth, right?
This is two different things. So this is going to be the sixteen-inch water line for the water side and is also going to be the overrun for the wastewater treatment plant. So this is actually going to go into both the, and it's kind of split up right now. Once again, so I found the total amount's going to be, I got seventy-seven percent of it going into water side, twenty-three percent going into wastewater side.
So one of the things, that twenty-three percent, what, what's that amount total to be?
Uh, well, this is hypothetically going one point seven, I think, or one point six and some change.
Okay, because one of the things that I heard Carmen mention was possibly increasing the base rate to, to increase the reserve amount. This entire amount is, as Carmen will call it, Pago capital, money that we spent out of the general fund that we'd be reimbursing ourselves back, right?
Correct.
So this is going to be a huge increase for our reserve.
Well, we are going, technically, so right now, as currently what's going on, if you looked at my inter-fund transfers, we are taking money out of our general fund. I'm just transferring it over to the actual five-one-seven fund, transferring that to pay the AP side of our general fund. So the money's coming out of right now, what reserves we have. This is to put the money back into the reserves that we're spending right now currently.
Correct, but, but my point would be we would see a dramatic increase in our actual reserve as a result of this refunding, correct?
The net would be no.
The net would be no for now, right? Because it's, you're taking away from.
Right now, we're taking away from what we have in reserves right now. So we're going to reduce our reserves right now and then we're going to refund them back. So in one year, we're going to have prior year reserves, yes, if that's what you're asking.
Uh, Stephen, I think what he's asking is so, but in particular, the Pago capital, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for, we budgeted at the start of this fiscal year for CPNY would hopefully be funded in a, um, whatever you call it, take a reimbursement.
Reimbursement.
And funded over a thirty-year term. So that would be a three hundred thousand dollar bump in, in the reserves right there.
Yeah.
We spent it, it's going to come back.
The three thirty, no. The three, well, the three thirty's already been budgeted in there, so going forward, we'll be reimbursing back. That's what I'm saying. So when we take out this loan, that's going to come back, um, be reimbursed to ourselves for that and just drop into reserves. And we'll pay it off. We'll amortize it over time. So I'm thinking about it like a construction loan versus a mortgage.
Yeah, to me, it's, it's the equivalent of if you, you got a construction loan, but you paid out of pocket the first hundred thousand. When you get the construction loan, you refund your hundred thousand dollars back.
Right.
So you end up with a hundred thousand dollars more than you had.
You end up in the same place. You were down, but you're back in the same place.
And accounting side, Devon, Chris, they're going to watch it, I mean.
But, but the refund is not for just last year. We've had costs that go back a greater period, because we haven't, we, we, we spent the total one point seven million or whatever it is, wasn't just cost from last year or, or from this fiscal year.
It's only this fiscal year. It's, it's actually.
I think that's, that's incorrect. We just, so we started with fourteen million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand in GO and revenue debt. We've spent all the way through that. Um, the project is, is around ten percent over, so we'll say a million and a half. We had a thir- three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar Pago capital item in this fiscal year, which we're spending our way through. So Stephen has transferred that back into the fund to pay both CPNY, um, costs, costs and to some extent to pay Weber Kadaqua invoices. I don't know if we burned all the way through that three thirty-five yet.
So we are, this, this is starting basically two months ago when our account hit zero dollars. I started back two months ago transferring money out of the general fund to go to the reserves to put into this fund to cover the AP that's coming out of our main general fund.
So essentially, we exhausted all the funds for the previous bond issues in this fiscal year.
Both series, correct. Two months ago, we, we used up both of them.
That's fine.
And that's also including the three thirty that we've already put in there and budgeted this year. Uh, instead of going in item, I mean, it all was grouped together in the same fund. That's already been exhausted too. So now we are a true net of negative money in this account.
Okay, that's fine. That makes sense. I thought there was some amounts from previous years. I didn't realize it started, we started burning this year.
Correct.
Okay.
This is the year we started panicking.
No, we started panicking long before this. This is, this is when we went negative.
We, we, we knew there was an issue when we were elected.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then underneath it, you're going to see the VATCON and camera. Uh, I'm sorry, I need to take out the hand camera on there. That's, that's on me. The camera got moved and separated out, so the top, the top two is just the VATCON itself. Uh, that's going to be the VAT truck there. And then you have the camera van underneath it, which is the one that we're going out. So I have true data, true numbers in the VATCON two amounts. The camera one is, I thought I reached out to the, uh, to the banker and just kind of see what kind of idea we're looking at, not knowing the rates. That's kind of what he's hitting us with right now. So this is the, the worst case scenario, but hopefully can get better once we move forward with and get a little better rate on it.
The way rates have gone up.
Yeah, where's, where's the, uh, what's the status on that VATCON truck?
Last I heard, it was supposed to be delivered July, August. I have not got a recent update for that, so it should be here probably anytime this month, August.
Thank you.
And we have made our first interest payment technically today. So we are just now starting to make interest on that and we'll actually have our interest and principal starting this fiscal year coming up.
Okay.
Which is a three-year note.
Mike, we didn't have them put our old logo on that truck, did we?
There won't be any logo on it.
What color is the truck? Is it white?
Blue, wasn't it?
I'm not exactly sure what color the truck was ordered. I'm assuming it will come white.
I believe it's white.
Okay.
It's not painted. It's flesh tone.
You get your fresh logo on there, Bill.
It's not painted. I was thinking maybe pink.
Pink, yeah. Anything else?
We talked about thirteen.
Yeah, we've talked about thirteen.
On page fourteen, had a conversation and you got to really blow this one up.
Yeah, I know, I looked at that.
Under eight nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I studied every one of these numbers, isn't it?
On the, on the, on the, on the far right column, on the last line across, the far, you know, the last grouping says that the total water sold is eighty million gallons, I think is what. And we've agreed, General Manager, I think, and Mike, it was, that's an average.
So that is, yeah, so the forties, if you, if you can read it on there, it's going to be CC ninety-one. I'm sorry, CC ninety, uh, is the start of it. So that is projection what the, uh, sum with the total amount of meters are going to be, accounts are going to be. Then I take the average of the, so I'm using three years. When I say three years, we're not using the last three. I'm using the three completed years, so fiscal seventeen, sixteen, and fifteen. I take what the average, uh, meters are going to be there and then I do multiplication to find out what their average is going to be, which is eighty million. Uh, so that's taking the data from there. Uh, it says total on there, but that is the average per month on there, not the total of what all projections are going to be.
It's average per month.
Correct.
Yeah, which comes out really close to the numbers that I mentioned before.
Yeah, I did another calculation. I came up to seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety, I mean, it's re- really close to the actual, from the numbers I was projecting everything to be. So the, the biggest, and really the thing to take from this, from the very, very small print on there and all those calculations, uh, these are using actual numbers for the lot, for the three years of seventeen, sixteen, and fifteen. Uh, as, as Director, you know, or Vice President said, um, there were some wet years in there, so this is basically a good conservative number that we have here. We are using, uh, my recommendation is, is half a percent. That is giving us about twenty-four new accounts next year. I reached out to the town. They said about thirty-six, thirty-seven is what we're looking at. Uh, obviously I don't plan a hundred percent of that going, so I think a half a percent is a good projection of what we're looking for going forward. We might have over projected a little bit, um, from just from what we're pacing right now as far as what we're going to have at the end of this fiscal year that we're currently on, so I backtracked a few meters back.
Oh, I see, meter-wise.
Meter-wise, yeah, yeah, just meter-wise. I backtracked a few meters back. If you look at what ended, our budget for eighteen versus the end of here is just a few meters off, just want it to be a little more right on. And we're, we're fairly close. I'm F O for confident about it. We're about ten percent there, but just wanted to make sure we backtracked a few meters.
These are actually all wet years.
Correct.
Which mean, yeah.
Well, I think there was one decent, right? There was.
I'd have, well, I'd have to, just a second. I can tell you. Standby.
Great, nine, eight, four. I got a little over.
Nope. Based on the, here again, I'm working off the ten-year average. Twenty seventeen was, uh, down, meaning it was a wet year, eleven percent. Twenty fourteen was down sixteen percent and twenty thirteen was down nine percent. So they were all wet years, which, which makes if you use those wet years going forward and you have a dry year like we're in right now.
Right.
It'd be a nice surprise.
That's, that's a nice, nice.
So next year, well, actually next year I'll be using eighteen, seventeen, and sixteen technically, because we don't have true data for yet.
Maybe I'll still be here.
Two and one.
Uh, and then if you looked at the, if you can kind of read everything going through here, uh, these are our base rates, projected revenue for our base rates, uh, what actually comes in versus the volumetric revenue versus the base rate revenue. Uh, this takes consideration what the increase is going to be on top of that. And then you also have, um, right now, one thing kind of stands out here is the meter set fees here. Uh, so we actually are predicting or averaging about five, but that's, if you look at the last couple of months, it's slowing down significantly. So it's going to keep going lower and lower as we get close to build out. And then it kind of shows a few of our revenues for our extra, you know, shut offs and stuff like that, late fees. Not showing any increasing on those.
Yeah, so I asked Carmen this question. Uh, previously, we've, uh, kind of done a, um, what term do I want to use? A graduated, uh, man, I can't think of likely. Our goal was to go to the AWWA rate for the base rate. And from speaking with Carmen, he was not aware of that. And so we were in basically like year three or five or four, five of the transition. And, and I asked him and I don't recall getting the answer, if we took that into account when you built these models.
So these models are based on the current rates that we have now. No increases, no changes.
The, the, uh, the base rate, what we're talking about is the size of meter and going to AWWA standards for the size of meter, the factor that's associated with that.
Greg, when I, we talked about it last night, it was pretty late, um, but in fact, we, I did find out about it today. So, um, we spent a few minutes on the phone with our consultant from NewGen and he went through that. His recollection was that we're actually using, um, something that's very similar to AWWA rates, but he was going off of that, um, one that was distributed by the Texas Rural Water Association. But it was the same thing. It effectively, um, created, you know, let's say that a one, uh, five-eighth inch meter would allow thirty gallons a minute. One inch meter would allow fifty. The, the base rate ought to be proportionate because built into base rates is this notion of readiness to serve, right? I mean, e- even if somebody is out of town for a month and they don't use any water, there's still a fire hydrant near their house. We're going to put that out. We're going to send someone by to read the, read the meter, um, all those things. So, um, it was my understanding that we're actually there on that basis because three, thirty-two, twenty-three was the one inch equivalent on the water side base rate.
Okay, so we, so we, so we've achieved that transition of that.
Yeah, because I knew it had been going on for a while.
And in fact, um, you know, the, you know, we'll, we'll get to this. It's one of the things I want to talk about. We're getting pretty close. But, um, you know, we, we basically have a flat budget year over year and that includes committing some extra money to reserves. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of opposed to making recommendations to make no rate changes. I do think that this is a time where we could say, we're not going to create any, um, volume-based revenue changes. We're going to leave that the way it is this year. But we're going to add a buck or two to the base rates and distribute them appropriately based on size of meter. So if it's a buck or two on water per month to a one-inch meter, then it would be a bigger number for these others. And, and to focus on contributing to reserves and being prepared to ramp up pipeline replacements going forward. So that's the justification. Um, I've had some experience with that and, you know, I think we'd want to communicate that with our public and say, um, look, the cost of replacing a pipeline has nothing to do with how much water went through it. It's just the cost of replacing the pipeline. So, you know, our, it should be a part of the fixed fee and I believe that just ordinary pipeline replacements, you know, eight inches in a neighborhood should be Pago capital. I don't think we should be financing those. We should be getting enough money to get into a replacement mode. I think something as expensive as the interconnecting pipeline should be financed. Um, it's a system improvement and ought to be financed at as close of a term to its lifespan as we can get, which is why I'm recommending thirty years instead of twenty. We've never apparently issued a more than a twenty-year bond.
It's the, uh, the additional, it's, you look at the interest that you pay to flush it out over that time period, reduce the interest.
But it, you can also look at it like
I understand what you're at.
The people benefiting from the depreciation are the ones paying for it. So, you know, that has to do with kind of the older traditional style of, of infrastructure, right? A developer would come to the mud, we'd have them our specs, they'd go out and put the infrastructure in and they'd give us the keys. You drive it, right? So, um, but the cost of that infrastructure was in the mortgage and the old style of development. Pids are different. But then, you know, that gets paid off in thirty years. And then there's no money set aside for replacing that pipe for the next fifty years. And it kind of gets left to the next generation. So that becomes a challenge, especially for fast-growing cities. They're not setting aside money for that. We're nearing, we're nearing buildout now.
Yep.
So, um, that, that is my recommendation, so. But I do think, um, we ought to consider, um, adding the buck or two to say the one inch and then scaling it appropriately according to the scale, um, on the base rate. And to talk about that, the purpose of this is to start to gear up for pipeline replacements. It's a fixed cost for a fixed expense, um, going forward. And, um, we know that we've got some that are, you know, dying early. These asbestos concrete pipes are brittle and particularly under driveways. Ironically, that's because the driveway prevents the soil from getting any water in it. But on the sides of the driveway, it gets wet, it, it expands, it dries out, it contracts. And so they're brittle and they break and they often break right under the, under the driveway where the cost of replacing it, um, really goes up because you have to put in concrete over the top as opposed to just digging a trench, putting some sod on it and calling it good. So, um, you know, I think that's where we're at. We, we didn't want to, um, recommend increasing the revenue side, so the, or the volumetric side of the revenue budget. But do you think there's, um, room to talk about just adding a buck or two to the one-inch meter and scaling it appropriately for that purpose? If we were to do that, um, we may not go through a full rate-making cost allocation process with our consultant for this year. Obviously, you know, the, the additional revenue needed is not that large.
My, my only, one of my concerns with, uh, this particular budget is on the wastewater side. Because when we went through the rates last time with the old board, the decision was made not to increase the rates on the commercials that called for in the study, and I want to see those increased this time.
Okay, well, we, we can certainly run it, run it through.
I wanna make sure that that dynamic is correct.
Yeah, a- and I would say.
It would, it might not mean an increase, I mean.
Well, it, it would likely mean an increase, and my position on that would be, the rates for the commercial side has probably gone up hundred, hundred fifty percent over the last year and a half. Uh, just because a person can't s- s- uh, screen, doesn't, doesn't mean you keep squeezing them. I think that given the rapid and large rate increase that the commercial, uh, customers have received, I personally am not for, uh, further increasing their rates. I think, I, 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 in my opinion, it's unconscionable to continue to increase the rates, given the rate increases that they have. I was all for making sure they paid their fair share.
Well, that's what I'm talking about here, is pay their fair share.
Yeah, well, there's a, um.
So we'll see what, we'll see what that fair share number is when we run it through the, run it out the other side.
Yeah.
We can certainly do that. So that's part, that's, that, for, for those who don't know, that's the cost allocation process. We go through and attribute costs of the system for commercial accounts, that's really, we only have two classes, that and residential. Um, we allocate the cost between the two parts of the system, they use it differently. Um, and we come up with, you know, we were gonna allocate this much of system cost to this group, this to the other, and then within the group, it gets scaled. Some people have one-inch meters in their home, some have five-eighths, they pay different rates, but the total revenue from each customer class then, um, is done that way, and it seems like we got pretty close, actually, we're not that far.
I think it was about a, a ten or twelve percent.
Five, it was, one was seventeen, and one was twenty-four, that's what, uh,
Yeah, I think that's a twelve percent difference, yeah.
He didn't understand where he was at, but it was seventeen to twenty-four, the residential went, we, what happened was, the residential users used more volume over the winter averaging period this year than they did the previous year, and the cost structure, the cost was about the same, so that would have, there would have been a decrease in the residential rates, okay? And, but we didn't wanna lower those rates, because we were looking for a, an end number, and so we left the residential where it was at. And I think, and then what happened is we left the commercial where it was at, and said we were gonna subsidize the commercial with water revenue. And what I'm looking at now is, as I look at this budget, is I want to correct that. I think that each, and I'm pretty sure it's state statute, that each individual user group is responsible for their own rates. And so, for their own costs. And so that's, that's what I'll be driving.
But, but I guess why we disagree is, I don't, commercial's not a separate class. Uh, there's not a, there's not a different, the cost to process, that water's not different from residential. The, the reason why we make a differentiation is because previously we attributed too much water usage to the, on the residential side, which artificially lowered the rates for the commercial side, and because we knew exactly how much they were, they were being billed, they were paying eleven percent of the revenue, and residential was paying eighty-nine percent, even though they were using twenty-seven percent versus the seventy-three. Uh, and so.
Yeah, so we balance it out once, and then last time, we didn't keep it balanced. And so this time, I wanna get it, we'll look at it and see what the real balance is.
Do we wanna, do you wanna go forward in, 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 for the next winter average, or you wanna go forward now as far as the budget-wise?
Say it again?
When you say you wanna balance the amount, are we looking at doing the analysis now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, you don't, you, you just use the same winter averaging, you use the same, you use the same percentage number of use that we had from before, whatever that, whether it was seventy-two, whatever, you use that number, and then you do it with your cost structure to see where you're at there in your rates.
Last time, we didn't just use the same one, just to use it, we used it because it didn't change.
Yeah.
And so you'd want to evaluate whether or not it's still seventy-three, twenty-seven.
Okay.
And if so, go with, I mean, if it changed one percent, what they do, if you look at it and it's thirty, seventy, if there is a, a significant change, then you'd want to reassess it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we certainly have budgets for and can get that processed, so, um, you know, we'll, we'll bring it back. But again, this was the whole point was, um, this is the budget that gets fed into the rate-making and cost allocation process.
Yeah.
I guess where I was in the rate-making side of the question, yeah, but this is, yeah, the budget.
Okay.
Can we pass it tonight?
No.
No.
There's no actions possible, uh, but.
I was kidding, but I wasn't.
Okay, so, any other questions or comments on the budget, on the draft fiscal year twenty nineteen budget?
Did you have anything more on your list?
Um, well, um, really no, I think we've covered it, maybe not in the order that I had planned on, but the, um, you know, I think we've covered everything. Um, you know, in terms of our budget, the one question is, um, as we finalize it, um, the debt service around what type of a loan we take out from Texas Water Development Board, twenty-year, thirty-year, I'm recommending thirty. You guys, um, you know, at our next meeting, we'll come back and, um, you know, be talking about certifying the tax rate. And we can put an agenda, action item on the agenda, um, so that the board can take a position on that, um.
Is the, uh, let me ask you a question. Is the, uh, is that cost, what of that, what of that sixteen-inch line will be incurred in the, in this budget, uh, and is that cost in it? I mean, there was, you had some interest, interest, two interest payments, one interest payment?
One interest payment.
One interest.
One interest payment and one principal payment. We're gonna skip the March payment, we'll bypass that and get it lined up with the rest of the bonds in September.
Right, right now, they're planning on going to bid on the project in January, um, and, so, but that'd be going to bid, so, or maybe it's January, February, but there's a, a long bidding requirement, so we're really talking about construction starting in March.
I guess we haven't had engineering.
I would say March, April.
Okay, wow, takes forever. Uh, so, okay. So I was looking at the impact on the rate structure for that, but if we bring the rate structure, lead it just a little bit, then that impact may not be so dramatic.
And when you look at the implementation of at least the water line side of that project, we could go forward and get the loan, and you have a couple of years before you're in the arbitrage position. Um, right now, interest rates are low enough through Texas Water Development Board that even if you were to go too long on arbitrage, it's not a huge penalty, but you, you know, you take out the loan, you wanna spend it within the specified timeframe. Um, but in this case, we're gonna have some easement purchases, so once the project's approved, um, presuming that, you know, all that comes in and it's approved by our board, to proceed, the first little bit of time is gonna be finalizing those easement purchases, um, and getting a, you know, contract.
Easement purchases and engineering.
Yeah, well, the engineering is, uh, gonna be done by end of year.
Okay.
Um, but that will include the recommendation for the final alignment, as well as a, a final cost estimate for the purchase.
Okay.
So, I think that's it. Is that, do you have anything else, Mike?
Okay, uh, let's see. Item number two, uh, there's no action to be taken on item number one. Item number two, set future meeting date. I think our meeting date is set for, what, August twentieth? Is that correct, Lori?
Yes, I'm sorry, we thought you might wanna have another, um, workshop too.
I'm workshopped out.
Does staff need another workshop?
Um, well, if the board is giving me the, the vibe of comfort with what we put forward, I, I, that's what I'm sensing. I don't know that we need one. Um, we may end up having an emergency meeting to talk about, you know, some of the um, challenges associated with, um, you know, a couple of the breaks that we've had recently. But those would be short, sort of, you know, let's get together and make a group decision, um, on that, but, um, I may have a um, a way forward without calling another foremeeting of, of our board, so, um, I wanna go down that pathway, and I would say let's not set one for now, uh, be my recommendation.
I mean, last year, we did, we had set two, but this year, we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule than we were last year at this time, as far as setting our meetings to kinda look at it. Um, I guess the only thing would change really if I got with Chris Eckert and, you know, do the allocation, that might be something we need to look into as far as the rates.
Now, we did establish a rates committee at a previous meeting.
Yeah, there's a rates committee, so.
So we, we may, may well have a meeting on that, but we wanna get with Chris, because we weren't really sure we were gonna go through spending the money to do that cost allocation, you know, report from NewGen, which I think we should always do. Um, but in a case like this, where we're just recommending a small, flat fee, then, um, you know, we could have gotten by with that. But we talked to him this afternoon, and we feel like we're on track with what you're talking about, about allocation of base rates. So we'll call him back tomorrow and let him know and try to get a date, and, um, and set, you know, for when he can take this budget, this draft budget, shove it into the rate model, and, um, you know, Stephen's been, has a copy of the rate model, he's been learning how it works. Um, we're gonna try to get to where we can not only show, it's probably not gonna happen this year, but not only show the board the, the impact on next year, but including some reasonable assumptions about inflation and our five-year capital plan, here's what we see for the next five years of projected rate increases. I mean, there's swags at that point, but at least, you know, it's a look ahead based on the capital planning that comes out of the, um, you know, the asset management plan, what we think we really need to spend on improving the system.
Moving to the gold standard.
Okay, so, so hearing August twentieth is our next scheduled meeting, unless something changes with, the issue that Carmen mentioned. Is there anything else? Entertain a motion?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion by Vice President Rose to adjourn.
By second.
Director Castaway, second. All in favor indicate by raising your hand.
I was kinda enjoying it, but if you guys wanna adjourn, go, okay.
Unanimous, the meeting is adjourned, nine nineteen.
You don't, you don't wanna bring up anything for reconsideration?